Palin, Squamish, Kuis, Tliktnamatla, Squamish, Umuuehwe. Welcome to the Committee of the Whole for June 22nd, 2019. I'm councillor Chris Peddignall, acting mayor and filling in for Mayor Elliott. Actually, I guess this is a committee of the whole which council chairs, so not filling in right now. Later on, I'll fill in. So, welcome, everyone. Just before we start, I'll note that we are scaling really close to form today, so if someone needs to step out or use the washing machine, give us a heads up. Hopefully, we plan around that and ideally, everyone can just sit in seats all day and not move. But we'll see how that goes. So, would someone like to move adoption of the agenda? I'll do that. Councillor French, second councillor Perford, thank you. All those in favor? And opposed? Action carries, thank you. So, first item on the agenda is Constellation Festival update.
Okay. I'll do a quick intro if you don't mind. This morning, Chair and Councillor, my name is Devon Guest. Manager of Arts and Culture here for the District of Squamish, for the Squamishing. As you know, we were in front of council. The event organizers and myself were in front of council. Wish I had known that you were about to do that. We will be, the Constellation Festival is here today to discuss the three plans that are still outstanding. And those are the Waste Management Plan, the Traffic and Transportation Plan, and the Emergency Preparedness Plan. All of which are accelerating towards the finish line at a good pace. And staff feel confident in the intentions of the organizers to continue their commitment towards excellence in these plans. So, I will turn it back over to them. And if you have any questions, please feel free to jump in.
Alright, round two. So, starting with the Waste Manag-
Can we just do introductions?
Sorry. I'm Catherine Matthews, one of the operations directors for Constellation.
And I'm Kurt Larson, and Co-Operations.
The, okay, so, sorry about that. Starting with Waste Management Plan. And before I go into this, I just wanted to thank all the staff for helping us with this because we've got into a couple of things that we probably wouldn't have come to without them. So, it's been really helpful to have them on our side. So, the operators for the Waste Management Plan, we have a Director of Waste Management who will be managing everything from our side. GFL is providing us with all of our gray water tanks, waste receptacles, porta-potties, trailer washrooms, that kind of stuff, as well as pumping and servicing during the festival. AWARE, the Association of Whistler Area Residents for the Environment, which I'll just refer to as AWARE from now on, is running our waste stations at the festival and providing a bunch of the labor for moving things around the festival. We'll also have a large team of Green Team volunteers to help us reach the targets below. So, overall, our Waste Management objectives and targets are to reduce the amount of waste generated on-site by starting, like, creating a way that it doesn't even get on-site, which we'll talk about in a little bit with AWARE. Zero Waste is one of our big goals, which we'll talk about a little bit once we get to the site map. Monitoring and maintaining ecologically sensitive areas surrounding the festival, which is something we talked about a little bit two weeks ago, but it is also a big part of the Waste Management Plan. Providing, sorry, reducing the potential for human wildlife conflicts. So, for instance, we have a 10-foot c-cann at the staff camping, so that people can put their coolers in there overnight, since we won't have the room for car camping. We'll be providing charitable organizations with the opportunity to raise funds by assisting with on-site recycling initiatives and then engaging all on-site and contributing to the success of this plan. So, a usage overview. Just an update on this. The Waste Management Plan concentrates on a couple of different areas. So, one is staff GA parking area. We have around 1,200 parking spots in the Sabre Lot across Queen's Way and along Industrial. We also have the festival site, of course. And then, we have the staff camping, bike valet, and VIP staff and accessible parking at Lager Sports. In addition to these areas, some of the key places that we're focusing on are vendors, sponsors, and then the backstage production areas. So, for instance, with our vendors, like, all of our marketplace vendors, they're not allowed to bring any single-use plastics on-site. They have to either use fiberware or compostable materials. Sponsors are not allowed to give out little, like, tchotchke items. So, we won't have a bunch of, like, plastic wrap floating around the site from cheap giveaways. So, the site map, which, as we learned last time, is really small on the screen, is in front of you if you wanted to look at a larger or a version of that. So, on this site map, you'll see a couple of green, each of those green boxes is a 10-by-10 tent, which is one of the AWARE stations, which you'll see in the next couple of slides. So, we have six of those across the site. One in backstage, one in VIP, three in the main GA areas, and then one right outside of the main gates for people that are coming onto and leaving site. And then, in addition, you'll see that there is a, there's kind of this back-of-house service station. And in there, we have a cup-washing, a 20-by-20 cup-washing tent. One of our plans on reducing waste is using reusable eco cups. So, these cups are, like, a hard plastic that can ultimately be recycled. But, like, I sell this as a model in Belgium. And you buy your cup at the beginning of the day for $2 deposit. And then, at the end of the day, you can turn it back in for your deposit back or you can take it home as a souvenir. I've had mine at home for the past three or four years and run it through my dishwasher. But eventually, if I want to recycle it, I can. But, so, we are going to keep those cups and use draft at the festival. So, that way, we won't have as much in the refundables category with a bunch of aluminum cans just thrown across the site. So, that's one of the big things. And then, we also have a water filling station, so people can use those same cups to go and fill up their water bottles for free. So, we won't be selling any water bottles on-site either. Again, reducing the single-use plastics that we'll have on-site. So, the waste numbers and placements are shown here. I already showed you where the AWARE stations are. But then, it also just shows that we, like we talked about last week, having the porta-potties on loggers for people that are walking through the festivals. So, that is shown there. We also have all of the different backstage streams. So, the waste landfill, cardboard, organics will be our largest streams, we believe. And then, outside of that, we also have the mixed recyclables, soft plastic film. So, because we have, like, merch and a bunch of things that'll come wrapped in plastics, we want to make sure that those are disposed of properly and recyclable. And then, also, the mixed paper and paper recyclables. We also have a bunch of different water stations. Like, we have two different hand-wash stations in the festival grounds where people can do that. We have two different trailer restrooms, one in the backstage, one in the VIP. And different, we also have two 95-gallon bins at the front gates where we can put anything that's not allowed on-site. And then, those items will be taken to a waste sorting station backstage or in that service station and then sorted, put into their proper streams so that we don't have contaminated streams.
May I interject for a moment? So, the numbers Catherine outlined on the previous slide exceed those in which are outlined and recommended by Vancouver Coastal Health.
So, I talked a lot about the AWARE stations, but this gives you a visual depiction of what that looks like. They are all attended. So, no one can ever go, just like, throw something away and not understand where it goes because the people that are attending the stations are all highly educated on zero waste and proper placement of different streams. There will be six different streams at each attended station, which you can see in the bottom six bullet points there. And then, one of the reasons that we were really excited to work with AWARE is that they have helped a lot in this idea of a pre-event and post-event support. So, in the pre-event support, they've helped us in messaging to vendors and how we can reduce the waste that's even brought on-site. They believe that the best way to prevent waste is to prevent it from happening in the first place. So, that's one of the things they've been helping us with. The day of zero waste stations, as you can see and I've been talking about here. And then, the post-event diversion follow-up. They check our diversion rates and then make recommendations for upcoming years on how we can do better, where we can improve, and create a way to proceed in a better waste world in the future. Moving on to our Traffic and Transportation Management Plan. We have two main operators that are running this. One is Right Turn Events, who's our traffic management. They've worked large-scale events like the Olympics and the Super Bowl. They've also worked Squamish Valley in some of their last years. And Squamish Connector is our transportation management partner. So, they'll be providing buses and drivers for the different shuttle options that I'll talk about in a second. Our parking lot hours, they open two hours ahead of the festival and then close an hour after the festival. If people want to come early, park and just get set, they can. Or if they want to come pick up their wristbands before it gets too crazy, they can park, cover their wristbands, that kind of thing. The Sabre Lot capacity, which will be our only parking, is 1,200 cars, which, according to Right Turn, who has expertise in this field, will end up being around 3,600 attendees. Just as we go into the next slide and it shows the different numbers that we need. So, this will fulfill all of our parking. You might notice that we're no longer using Hendrickson Field or the All-Weather Fields. We could not come to an agreement on price for that with staff. So, we're not using it. The parking price will be $25 daily, done in advance. And then, the pay-on day will be $35 daily.
No, just, it's almost quarter after and we have until 9:30. I'd like to leave 10 minutes for council questions if we can, so.
Okay, go really. Sorry, these are really needy plans. I already took out a lot. Modes of transportation, as I said, we need, we have 3,600 spots for attendees. The max that we believe we'll be parking is 3,500. We'll also have walking and biking and a bike valet, which we think will be really busy based on our bike valet partner. And then, we have shuttles from Vancouver, Whistler, and both of our partner campsites. GA parking will be at Sabre. As I said, we'll have a bunch of staff members there at all times. And this was used in Squamish Valley by our Right Turn Events really successfully with no problems. So, we don't believe that we'll have any issues, especially since you can come in from industrial or commercial. We'll have a bunch of different parking barricades within the neighborhoods. And also, at Brennan Park, no parking signs along loggers to keep people from parking there, to keep people from illegally parking within the neighborhoods, Brennan Park, Lager's Lane. We'll have a passenger pickup and drop-off north and south of the site. North being the priority, which will be messaged by digital messaging boards off of the freeway. 20 spots parallel north of the site and 40 south. The 20 north is where we'll start. And then, if the traffic management people feel like it's getting too full, they can push to the south, but the priority will be to keep to the north. All of our fence will be closed and that's where our shuttles will be coming through. We'll also have a pedestrian path through there from the parking lot. But we'll have to keep it delineated from the shuttles. We have the two different teams for traffic and transportation that will work together. If you have any more questions about that, go over it. Last, Emergency Management Plan. So, key priorities on this is to make sure that we keep everyone safe. Patrons, sponsors, staff, volunteers. We also have a goal to provide a safe, effective, and efficient response to any emergency situations that might occur during the Constellation Festival. And then, the objectives are to make sure that everyone is familiar with our emergency plans and that they have a copy. Ensure that emergency situations can be properly addressed and assessed. Ensure that response teams are in place and know how to deal with the various emergency scenarios outlined in the plan. And then, ensure critical operations control can be executed, including the shutdown of electrical and utility systems or other equipment in the case of a mass event. So, the way that our plan is broken out as far as response is if an incident occurs, there's a couple of different condition sizes. So, the more moderate and minor events are Condition 1, whereas Condition 2 are a major or area-wide event. So, everything goes to Event Control first, which is our dispatch. If it's a minor event, like someone just needs, like, first aid response, that'll just go straight to the first aid and security. Whereas, if it is a more significant event, it'll go the AHA's authority having jurisdictions. It'll go to that authority and then a rep from our side. Whereas, if it is, like, there is a mass flood and we need to do a site evacuation or if there's a fire that, you know, someone crashes their car to a tree and there's a fire and it's coming closer to us and we need to do an evacuation, that's more in your Condition 2. Which you can see more, oh, and sorry, and at the bottom. If it does go into an area-wide event, we'll defer to the district's EOC and work under the district's guidance. Condition 1 includes such things as information alert to lay event, minor and moderate incidents. You can read examples there. More major events would be a partial or full site-wide evacuation or a full area evacuation. If there is a full area evacuation, we have all the different buses that we're already using that have space for around 460 attendees. We'll direct people to their cars as much as possible to get them out of the site. And we have additional lynch buses that we could bring up from the city to do a larger-scale evacuation. The EOC structure includes, you know, the event producers, the two of us on the operations side, our Director of Public Safety. And then, it goes from there into RCMP, Squamish Fire, our medical and security agencies. And then, this just shows the entire, like, if we did have to do a site-wide evacuation, it shows the different heads of state that we'd contact to spread the word about within staff. The plan's not shown here or really talked about, but we have a bunch of different contingency plans listed with different reactions and things that we would need to document in the case of a contingency situation. As I said, these plans are really needy. I think this plan is 60 pages long. So, breaking them down into a 20-minute now presentation was, there'll probably be a lot of questions, which I will take now.
Councillor? How will you be, how will the Green Team volunteers be recruited?
We have a volunteer section on our website. And anyone who signs up for our newsletter is asked if they want to volunteer. And so, then, those people are then put into a volunteer mailing list. We have a survey online now that people can fill out. And one of the things that they choose is their top three volunteer priorities. And Green Team and Sorting is one of the choices. And we've actually had a decent response from people putting that as their number one through three choices. So, people opt into it rather than us choosing random people and trying to throw them as something that they don't want to do.
Thank you. Perhaps you did cover and I missed it. But I'm wondering, how are you looking after the dispensing of drinking water? And you mentioned also hand-wash stations. Are these rented units? What is your policy on bottled water on-site?
People can bring empty water bottles onto the site, but we won't allow any liquids brought on-site because that can very easily be disguised alcohol. But you can bring in an empty water bottle. And the water filling stations are rentals, yes. They're from Hydro Pop Event Services, which does basically all of the major event water services for large events. Our water permit has been approved by VCH. And it's like an engineered water permit that's been approved. And we also will do water, as part of that permit, we have to do water testing from a bunch of different places within the system to make sure that all of our drinking water is healthy.
Thank you.
Yeah.
As Catherine previously mentioned, they haven't, no, they will not be selling bottled water on-site.
Yeah, sorry.
I have a question. With the use of paid parking at the Sabre site, what are our plans for the business park and the parking around there? I don't know that all businesses have signage necessarily, so I don't know even what our authority we have to enforce that. Do we have capacity to enforce it? Or is there any authority to even enforce that for those businesses around there?
I can take that, sure. If you are lawfully allowed to park on the street, then you are lawfully allowed to park on the street.
And in terms of the actual in-fronts of the businesses, like, some of them argue where they don't necessarily have parking signs or whatever. Do they have any capacity or is that up to them to enforce that or is that what?
If the parking is on private land, then it would be up to the private land owners to enforce and regulate. And on the street, if it, again, is, if you're lawfully allowed to park on the street, you're lawfully allowed to park on the street.
Have we had any communication with the property owners around there? I just know, sort of anecdotally, there's already some disagreements around parking on the sites and capacity. And so, I'm just wondering if we put a whole bunch of paid parking there, what the impacts are.
Yes. It's my understanding that the event organizers plan on circulating a letter to those businesses in the close proximity to the Sabre Lot.
Thank you. I just was, do I gather that Vancouver Coastal Health offers advisory services specific to festivals? Do they have a team of people that focus in this area and have, are ready to receive inquiries and offer support specifically concerning festivals?
Do you want me to take that one? Sure. Through Chair, I wouldn't phrase it that way. I would, it's more of a regulatory permitting system in terms of they have ratios in which major planned events need hit with regards to health and safety, healthy drinking water, and then, the disposal of, like, human waste as well as, no, basically just human waste. They don't generally touch garbage recycling programs. So, part of the lens that Vancouver Coastal Health uses when they're issuing their construction permit and their, what's the name of the second permit? It's escaping me at the moment. Anyway, the Constellation Festival is required to have two permits under Vancouver Coastal Health. And it's the regulations underneath, under which that permit exists that they fall under.
Councillor French?
So, the area between the Sabre parking and the event site, the walking infrastructure's not great. Is the walking route that most direct road or are they being routed around?
It will be that most direct road.
Okay. Can I get a quick summary of what protections will be in place to ensure pedestrians and cars are just kept separated?
So, we will have at Discovery where there can already be backups turning on to, on to Industrial, we'll have a traffic management person. So, we will have certain, like, TMPs along the route. But then, alternative to that, I don't think that we're planning on doing, like, you have to stay within, like, a certain barricaded area. Were we?
Yes.
Okay, yes, we, sorry. It is delineated. There's been a lot of back and forth on, now that we're only, this is our only parking now. So, it's been a bit of a change in the past week. But yeah, so it will be a delineated area with TMPs along the route.
Great, thank you. Councillor Stone?
Can you go back to the slide that had the breakdown of number of vehicles per day? I'm just curious why you're expecting so many more on the Friday?
So, these numbers were submitted through Right Turn Events. I think this is based on their historical data of what they've seen at events.
Anecdotally, it would also be safe to assume that the people who are coming into town from out of town for specifically the festival, you would see the influx arriving on the Friday.
And then, they just leave their car there for three days or?
If they have daily parking for Friday, Saturday, and Sunday displayed on their car, we, they've paid for parking that whole time.
I just think that that would carry over throughout, so.
And then, they would be camping at the Chikai Ranch and parking here and shuttling? Is that the?
It's a mix. So, some, we've had a lot of requests for people that don't have cars that want to take a shuttle from Vancouver, get on the shuttle to Chikai, and then camp there. So, that has been a big, big demand. As far as, I mean, I don't think that everyone coming to this festival is going to be camping. I think a lot of people are staying in the hotels. And so, you could drive in the first day, drive back to your hotel that night, and then, come in from the hotel the next day. If you're staying at the Sandman, it's in walking distance. But the festival begins, the doors open at 3:30 on Friday. So, it's, if you want to be there for some of the beginning bands and you have work, like, the earliest you can get off, then arriving at the parking lot is going to be easier than checking into your hotel at that moment or dropping the car off somewhere else.
We're also able to offer free local transit for the weekends over the summer. So, just wondering if that's being incorporated into your messaging as well?
Yeah.
Councillor Perford?
Thank you. I like the AWARE stations. Some of those are a great touch. I think that'll help a lot. And the plastic cup program is pretty cool. I'm curious to, I'm just remembering to get a good post-game on all this stuff as well. So, I'm curious to see how that sort of works itself through. Along the lines earlier, we're asking about parking roadways, that sort of thing in industrial park. And also, the plans that we just sort of seconded through today didn't really show Brennan Park. And what are we doing to, we're not using the parking at Brennan Park, but there's a huge parking lot there. How is that being managed so that it's still used for operations over the park?
Right. So, we, again, like, that was a change in this last week. The parking was so much more expensive than the parking at Sabre that we couldn't do it. So, we are planning on having barricades there at, let's say, like, the no festival parking, rec center only. That is our plan. We still need to meet with staff to decide what the final result or, like, what the final requirement will be. There might be a TMP there, there might not be a TMP there. But there will for sure be the barricades. But that'll, that'll be a staff conversation and what they feel is necessary as a lot of this has come through requirements from what they believe is the best for the district.
Would you like me to follow up on that?
Yeah.
So it's, it's staff's expectation that patrons to Brennand Park will have ease of Ease is probably the wrong word. It's probably that they will have access to Brennand Park. I think the, I think when you have a, a major planned event happening in your community, there needs to be realistic communication that goes out in terms of it might not look the way it always looks for you and that needs to be anticipated. It's part of participating in a major planned event. But you will be able to gain access to Brennand Park and have the, and have access and enjoyment of the four hour free parking if you're participating, if you're at Brennand Park.
And that's our, that's our current, I wasn't sure what the current parking regulation was.
Yeah, currently the parking lots at Brennand Park are four hour, yeah.
So, so some enforcement of that would need to be drawn out as well. I think that's good for me.
Okay, thank you. I'll just note that I expect we'll get some feedback from the businesses around there. They're the ones having to manage a lot of the parking, but so I guess we'll keep that in mind and see what happens.
Counselor, suggestion of that, perhaps some even Constellation Festival branded no event parking could be signs or something could be provided to the, to those probably around there. So it could also act as an advertising if they were up, you know, weekend bands, TMBs or something like that, then it can sort of get that out there as people are maybe scouting for spots to stash their, their car in these, in these private spots around so that.
That's a really good idea.
Easy some of the pressure and that can't be a huge expense. And then it's on them to install them up, at least they've been providing themselves.
Right, yeah. Thank you.
Just a suggestion.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. So next we have single use items regulation. Ms. White.
For those of, those who are tuning in by our live feed, my name is Shannon White, Sustainability Coordinator at the District of Squamish. I'm here to speak about the single use plastics regulation. I'm very briefly going to touch on all of these points. So just a little bit of background, talk about why regulating single use plastics, local management and how we manage single use plastics in Squamish, what this regulation is going to be, the outcomes and challenges it will face, the tools we have and the options, our timeline, as well as what other jurisdictions doing, our engagement and communications plan, enforcement considerations and budget considerations. So in February 2019, council directed staff with the following resolution that single use plastic bags and straws be banned by the end of 2019 with options for an overall single use plastic ban be brought back to council after engagement with the business community. Additionally, in the landscape of single use plastic regulation, the federal government recently announced the intention to ban single use plastics nationwide by 2021. However, the plan is a little bit short on details and we do not know the full list of what they are intending to categorize as single use plastics. Additionally, there are some local businesses in the community who have already taken action to reduce the amount of plastics created by their businesses. So that includes fees on bags at checkout, straws are optional, or they've already shifted to paper straws or don't offer them at all. Why are we talking about single use plastics is also really important to think about and to really define single use plastics here. We're talking about plastic products that are considered disposable and they're used once or twice and then thrown away or recycled. They're quite popular because they're free, convenient, easy to source, they have a high strength weight ratio, they're watertight and durable. However, within, we wanted to provide a little bit of scope on this regulation that staff are moving forward with. And as directed by council, we are looking at regulating straws and checkout bags at this point in time only. We will be considering other materials or products, or materials at a later date. And I just really want to be clear that we're not talking about, there's a difference between single use products, single use materials and plastics that are distributed at the point of checkout or when that interaction happens at the transaction where versus a product that you would buy in a store, so like a car for a child or something like that. So this is, we're really talking about packaging in this sense or, and then we also want to ensure accessibility and there will, as per the other bylaws that have been adopted by similar communities, there will, we are looking at several exemptions that would be in these bylaws. And input will be gathered through facilitated engagement on what those exemptions could look like to ensure that they work for the Squamish community and reflect the needs of our businesses and residences. We, the importance of, there are, there is a financial impact on taxpayers of our residents using single use plastics. As I mentioned, they do become garbage or are recyclable after one or two uses and they do end up largely in our landfill, which as many of you are aware is coming to its capacity in 2027. So anything we can do to reduce the amount of materials entering our landfill is a win and will help, help us with our waste management in the community. They also have the potential of clogging up catch basins. They also can cause increased staff time for litter collection and they also can end up in the garbage bins in our streetscapes on the roads in the community, at the bus shelters. They also have an environmental impact, so both upstream and downstream, there is the resource extraction required to create virgin plastic as well as the downstream is when they're discarded and littered into environment and creating hazards of wildlife. We don't have any local statistics for these elements, but Ocean Conservancy has included both checkout bags and straws in their top ten marine litter items found through global cleanups. Locally, we do have some level of data on where single use plastics are ending up in our landscape. So at the landfill, 9.5% of the total tonnage accepted in 2018 was plastic. The term plastic here does include many elements of what is plastic. So 2% of that is plastic film, which is retail bags and film wrap, and 2% is durable goods. So that does include straws, however, I just want to highlight that also includes items such as toys, any kind of solid plastic item that might be in the home. So it's hard there to determine which percentage of that is straws. Metro Vancouver has done some research that's a bit more detailed through the lens of a single use plastics and they found that 73% of plastic retail residential bags disposed of in their, in Metro Van, in the residential garbages were used actually as garbage bags. So one thing to be very clear is that when we talk about straws, straws cannot be recycled. So they are garbage after they are used. However, split bags, checkout bags are a part of the Recycle BC program, which is a provincial program for recycling residential paper and packaging. And so Recycle BC does have a couple drop offs, depot drop offs in the community where residents can bring their soft plastics, largely plastic bags. And in 2018, nine tons were collected. And to give you perspective, our landfill in 2018 collected 12,000 tons of garbage. And then during the 2018 curbside tune ups, in 54% of the recycling totes that were looked at, soft plastics were found in them and it was one of the top contaminants found during the curbside tune ups. So soft plastic bylaw, so not soft plastic, excuse me, single use item bylaw would really be moving towards creating or achieving these outcomes. So a shift in behavior of the residents, moving residents towards using reusable bags that are made and managed sustainably, using plastic straws only when absolutely necessary or not at all, and really understanding that behavior change is needed from our current way of thinking. Part of this is also key element is to ensure that we avoid unintended consequences and unintended consequences, a few of those could be here, creating further difficulty for those with disabilities, encourage, it would cause retailers potentially to shift to more environmentally harmful bags or compostable biodegradable alternatives which aren't, can't be processed in the C2C corridor. Or we could create difficulties for businesses adhering to varying regulations across different jurisdictions. So for example, in Metro Vancouver or West Vancouver, they could come up with something slightly different. And if somebody has a chain throughout that's in both municipalities and our versions of the bylaw are slightly different, it's just cause a little bit of headache for the business community. So these are all things that we will, during our facilitated engagement, be discussing and ensuring that we're, we're creating a bylaw that helps address, brings light all these unintended consequences. Really briefly, just touch on our authority to regulate as a municipality, under the community charter, the municipality has the power to regulate business transactions. We cannot adopt bylaws to protect the environment without approval of the ministry or the province on that. We do have several tools in our toolkit. So the first one's education, which we'll touch on as well as regulation, and then the third is encouraging reuse and reduce programs. So staff are proposing a combination of the first two. And if a third, the third option here does come up through the community organically, staff would support it and encourage it. However, we're not looking at actively creating a reuse, reduce program at this point in time. Looking a little bit deeper into our policy and regulatory options, these are all the different ways a ban, excuse me, a bylaw like this could be framed and the different ways that different municipalities and jurisdictions are looking at it. So we have by request only, a mandatory fee or a mandatory discount, a complete ban or reuse reduction targets. And it can be a combination of all of these, right? Right now, moving into the engagement, we will be looking at these two elements largely, however, we will keep our options open. And so the first one is by request only, which would apply to straws and then a ban, which would apply to checkout bags. This is a very brief scan of what's happening in similar, not similar, other jurisdictions. I just want to comment that this landscape is changing rapidly. Municipalities are moving quickly, others are diving into legal or staff reports or further data collection. So there are a few other municipalities who have adopted bylaws. Victoria's is only focused on checkout bags. It was upheld, sorry, the Canadian Plastic Bag Manufacturer Association did take the, the bylaws, I can't remember the words.
Took them to court.
Took them to court. Thanks.
That's a fancy way to say that.
Right. And it was upheld by the Supreme Court, however, it has been appealed and the, the decision and the ruling on that appeal has not been made public yet. Otherwise, Tofino, Yuculat, Courtney, Cumberland, Qualicum Beach, they have all moved forward with bylaws that ban checkout bags and straws. Vancouver has pushed back their effective dates and they are working on their kind of a longer range strategy. And then municipalities like Richmond, West Vancouver, North Vancouver City, North Vancouver, they are all kind of working on this at this point in time. A few common elements are that the, most of the bylaws only focus on one or two types of materials. Some are taking a long-term plan approach, so kind of staging different rollout dates. Most of them apply a grace period, some six to 12 months to ensure that businesses have an opportunity to roll out, use up their pre-existing inventory, train their staff, et cetera. And often, most of these municipalities are focusing on engagement and public information so that they're able to minimize enforcement costs. The timeline that staff is working with right now is as of today to September. We're going to begin facilitated engagement with target audiences, draft the bylaw and really work on developing those communication tools for businesses to use. The bylaw adoption will be happening hopefully in September, will come to council in early September with a draft bylaw. This will allow businesses a three month transition period from September to December. We will be activating the public awareness and education campaigns, working with the businesses to ensure they understand the bylaw and the nuances within it and then also engage them to use up their pre-existing inventory. And the effective date currently we are working with is the one that was originally proposed by council, which is January 1st, 2020. When, and staff will be monitoring compliance and responding accordingly, either on complaint basis or proactively depending on council's direction. And we would continue public engagement at that point. So our engagement and communications plan right now, so we've done some work mapping our stakeholders and really looking at who's impacted on this. And then we will be moving into doing facilitated stakeholder workshops. The focus will be largely on the four, four bullet points of stakeholder groups here. The general public will be part of our kind of post bylaw adoption, larger community outreach. We'll be really talking about the people who currently distribute straws and bags. We are looking at, sorry, I want to make sure, we are looking at achieving the involve level of the IAP2 communication involvement. I don't know the, also the proper framework, thank you, Chris. And so that is, that's why we're focusing on the ones that are largely impacted here. Once the bylaws adopted, we'll be, as I mentioned, moving out with the materials, advertising, depending on what amount of budget we have, we will be doing different tactics within the community. As for enforcement, so this will happen after the effective date. And really there are some enforcement considerations that need to be taken into account and bylaw officer requirement for their staff. So conducting site visits, write warning letters, ticket issuance, issuing, assembling evidence packages. And really upon the 2020 budget adoption and hiring of a bylaw officer, that enforcement would begin. And you'll see that we've put in 2019 budget considerations and 2020 to be discussed during 2020 budget talks. We can, so in 2019, I just want to be very clear that there was no budget allocated for this in the 2019 budget. So the legal review was $1,000 and staff is asking council to allocate 14,500 plus the 1,000 from the solid waste utility contingency fund to fund these two pieces. And the 14,500 includes the development of all the outreach materials, the retailer toolkit, kind of all those tactics that I mentioned or briefed over. So creating branded reusable bags, et cetera, to inform the general public. 2020, so these, these items will come back to council in the budget discussions as I mentioned. So one is the enforcement piece. Currently, we can only do a little enforcement with the current resources we have. And prior to any 2020 allocation to this, the bylaw team would be required to kind of reevaluate priorities and what they can achieve with their current staffing levels. Additionally, in 2020, we would be looking to include funding for a waste. So we will be doing a waste composition study, and we have $25,000 already allocated every two years for waste composition. And so we, to add a single-use plastics lens to that waste composition should be about $5,000. And then also to continue the communication rollout and engagement and redistribution for any tools to new businesses and any new tactics that we'd like to do in 2020, we will come back with about $3,000. So we have several council resolutions on the table. I'll walk through them. I just want to highlight that there was a slight change from report to council from the first one. It said, the word in blue that says stakeholder, it previously was public. So we just want to ensure that council's aware that from between now and September, we'll be doing really engaged-focused stakeholder engagement. So staff is asking council to direct or pass the following resolutions, that staff engage with stakeholders on the draft of a single-use plastic reduction bylaw and report back to the Committee of Hope in September with the following information. So summary of key points, issues we hear from the engagement, and a draft bylaw. Additionally, Hannah and Hannah thought is that staff draft the bylaw with effective date as this is an opportunity for council to revise the effective date if you do, if you don't think that the three-month transition period is long enough. That being said, we have been moving forward with January 1st as is. Additionally, that $15,500 be funded from the solid waste utility contingency fund for the 2019 expenses related to legal fees and communication outreach, and that funding for support for education bylaw enforcement be considered in the 2020 budget discussions. The other two resolutions are really about advocacy and what we are trying to ensure that our comments are getting out and we're able to try and communicate out to the province as well as SLRD and the UBCM, just to request support and just have our voice be heard. Right now, all the municipalities are doing this individually, and I think that there is a place for the province to kind of support us in that. And then also that staff continue to monitor other jurisdictions' actions relating to this topic.
I guess we'll, thank you. Start with questions and then I'll sort of observe and then move to attacking the actual resolutions. So councillor Stone.
Awesome. Thank you for the presentation. I have a few questions, and I'll start with perhaps a comment. Thanks for bringing in the results of the curbside tune-up and recognizing that that is, that the single-use flexible plastics are one of the key contaminants in the curbside. One piece that I think is missing from the report is the potential financial risk to the district with regards to our Recycle BC agreement, in that if we do start to exceed that 3% of contamination rate over long-term, then we can be fined. So I think we need to make that explicitly clear, that there's a financial risk to the district's perspective. And then I want to ask the question about the timing with regards to business outreach on the single-use plastics as well as the organics ban. So in this current budget, we have allocated an additional 0.75, I think it was, FTE, to help facilitate business engagement specifically on the organics piece. And in my mind, I think that there's really close alignment there. So just curious how you guys plan on tying these pieces together and if they can be brought together and so that engagement piece line is being done, once with the retail communities and so forth.
So the initial stakeholder engagement, the facilitated workshops for this next three months or two months, will really be about single-use plastics and kind of really diving deep into the barriers and obstacles, not just the easy ones, but kind of like further down the line, the deeper, how do we really make a move that out on this? That being said, then the idea is that this person, the position that you're speaking of, they will have developed these relationships and be providing like the retail toolkit once that's developed. And in that, we will be messaging organics as well. So they will be intertwined. And the idea is that exactly as you outlined, the person will be having the same conversation, one conversation, and both topics will be discussed. But the first, these facilitated workshops will really be about how can we make the single-use plastic bylaw work for Squamish?
And then just a quick follow-up on that. So my, I think we're still aligned on this, but my thinking is that we've been fairly clear that there's the single-use checkout plastic bags and the straws ban and request only is kind of coming, and that the engagement piece with business is really about the other pieces of single-use plastic and how we start to adopt a bylaw around that. So I just want to clarify, is that engagement through the summer is specifically on like the exemptions for single-use plastics, or if it's that broader component around how do we start to address the other single-use plastics?
I think the way we've been approaching it is that the majority of the engagement would be about the checkout bags and straws. And the other pieces would be like 25% of the conversation. So the main focus would be these two, because I would say, looking at the experiences of, for example, the city of Vancouver, they thought straws would be a quote-unquote "easy win", and they pushed it back dramatically. So it's not as easy as one might think. So we want to make sure that we're creating this to work for the businesses and residents. So yeah, the others would be just a smaller portion. And then we would start working on that once this bylaws kind of rolled out.
Councillor Anderson?
Just a couple of quick questions. In the proposed letter, advocacy letter to the province as part of your recommendations, the last bullet point, I don't know if you might be able to pull that up, please. There we go. So the last bullet point, I'm maybe just a bit confused, but I just want to read that correctly. And I want to understand that this expectation on compostable single-use items does not make compostable, the compostable stream less competitive? That's my question when I read that. I have to wonder if we're making these, putting these demands or expectations on compostable single-use items, does that mean that the non-compostable product is less competitive? Maybe I'm just confused in reading that, but it's not clear to me. We want to favour compostable products.
So what this is, this bullet point is asking, so as single checkout bags are managed by a Recycle BC programme, the idea of this is that compostable products are also managed by, Recycle BC is what is called here Extended Producer Responsibility Programme. So it's essentially saying the province should create a programme that helps pay for the cost of disposing of compostable products from these different sectors. So that's what this bullet is asking here. Does that make sense?
I would just add, sort of, we didn't get a chance, because there's a lot of material here, to get this, kind of into this topic. It's a little bit of a side topic. But there's a lot of challenge and a lot of confusion around biodegradable and compostable plastics, both bags and forks and everything else. Biodegradable doesn't necessarily mean compostable. It just means it breaks down into lots of little bits of plastic. Compostable does mean compostable, but it doesn't necessarily mean that it's compostable in the facilities that are available commonly to municipalities, and in particular in the Sea de Sky. Compostable plastics don't compost in the facilities that are available to us. And they look just like everything else. So there's a lot of consumer confusion over what goes where and how. It's a sort of a messy part of the single-use discussion. And so looking at an overall province-wide strategy on how to deal with compostable single-use items and in a practical sense is what we're asking for.
Thank you. You've given me the context for that one. These are labels and so on, and I'm drawing examples in other sectors where if you place expectations and new costs, you're in fact discriminating against the options you want to favour. But I'll leave that and move on to another item that comes up in a couple of places, and that is newspapers. As a former newspaper boy, before plastics were introduced as packaging for newspapers, today when I see copies of the local newspaper package in a plastic bag not being picked up by a homeowner or a business or whatever, it strikes me to ask you, is this an issue, a noteworthy issue for contamination in our local waste stream? Is newsprint, an eminently recyclable product, being contaminated with these plastic, this plastic format for delivery? Is this an issue that you note in our local waste management?
The curbside tune-up that was conducted last summer, last year, did notice that there was a lot of, people would take the bag with the newspaper in it and directly drop it in their recycling bin, which is a level of contamination, because soft plastics can't go in it. The other problem we have locally, and I know that Squamish Can, the nonprofit group in town, had talked about connecting with the chief in particular, is that those bags are biodegradable, so they actually are garbage. They're not even compostable. So there's a couple of elements in that issue.
Why I ask is because twice in this report, in the Recycling Council of Canada and in the staff report, this is mentioned in the list of potential exemptions. And I would suggest maybe that should be reconsidered, but I'll just leave that to your observation and discretion. Finally, before we come back and discuss the recommendations later, I'll come back to some other observations. But as somebody from the forest industry, with a forest industry background, I have to chase this argument and debate regarding paper versus plastic. And I find that the dialogue is very different in non-English-speaking countries. Scandinavia and Central Europe are overwhelmingly opting for paper and wood-based products as a national strategy even. And I find when I look at the research done, there's assumptions made about the pulp and paper-making process and about forest management that are false and not well-informed. And I think that this is going to be my suggestion, is an evolving discussion and dialogue worldwide, but that it is best left to provincial, national governments to sort out as part of an overall strategy, and not for municipal governments to go all in different directions, chasing down all kinds of research which is of better or lesser quality. Thank you.
Councillor Tatch? Thanks. I'd like to get a sense of the reaction that you've had so far in the work that's being done in putting this together. And specifically, has there been any strong pushback by the business community or anybody within the business community that you've had contact with?
To be fair, we haven't, staff hasn't done much outreach at this point in time. There have been some conversations with folks from the accessibility community to help us provide a little bit of perspective on who we need to contact and engage with, but we haven't reached out to the business community. That's going to happen as soon as we get direction from council or market today.
Okay, so then taking that one step further, I think it's safe to assume you haven't had any businesses coming directly to you with feedback of any kind, positive or negative? Okay?
Not that I'm aware of.
I have a couple of questions. In terms of some of the budgeting costs, why wouldn't we expect enforcement to cover, you know, fines and so on, to cover enforcement? Are we expecting that as long as we have a high level, of course we'll have a high level of compliance and therefore we'll be able to fund compliance through enforcement? Just the enforcement numbers seemed a little bit high to me, because I would expect that the savings in the landfill and fines for people who weren't adhering alongs on would sort of offset, and maybe that's unreasonable.
We don't anticipate the fines will offset the cost of an additional bylaw enforcement officer resource for this. Our first line of enforcement is always education and voluntary compliance. And fines are always sort of a last step that we take if we can't achieve compliance through other ways. So we don't consider enforcement to be a cost-recovery model. That's not a desirable model.
And so why the bold position for bylaw enforcement officers indicated here is also we wanted to, as councillors, we mentioned, pair with the follow-up on the organics source separation, like the solid waste utility bylaw enforcement. So we saw these two roles could be played by this position and this funding. Does that make sense?
So this funding then isn't strictly single-use plastics, it's somewhat organic stuff and so on as well?
Right, but still under the solid waste umbrella.
And is there a reason why, so for some things where we want the province to change what they're doing, we've talked about putting something forward at UBCM. Here we're talking about a letter and UBCM. Is there a criteria where we do one or the other versus both, or it's just you have to think of it here, maybe we should be thinking about a letter generally in other cases as
The more the merrier.
And the final question I had is, it talks about bylaw and education a fair bit and the role of education for bylaw officers. Is bylaw the best place for that necessarily, or is that sort of flexible? I just was trying to think in my head, is that the most efficient way to do the education piece?
The majority of education in this transition period is highlighted here, will be done by the sustainability coordinator that will be brought onto the team. And they will be working closely with the bylaw department.
Can I just add to that? Their investigative skills that bylaw officers are trained in, that wouldn't necessarily be held by a sustainability coordinator, for sure they're working in close partnership. But investigation skills, achieving buy-in, voluntary compliance, these are all things that bylaw officers are very practiced in.
Go to councillor Hurford and councillor Stoner, and I think if people want to start shifting into your thoughts before we start moving these.
Thank you. Thank you for all the work on this. The enforcement numbers I thought were a little high too. I think you've done a good job addressing that. I think that particularly this frontline stuff, like the over-the-counter, which is where we're focusing this, I would expect social pressure, if not a ban of high school kids to go in there, they should be doing, to look after big chunks of that. And I do see that backend stuff that we don't see, which is our sort of bio diversion rates, that sort of thing is definitely more focused with the bylaws. That's how I sort of see it playing out, but we'll see and get there. I'm certainly not interested in waiting for the other orders of government to sort this out, the steps that we can take here to move it forward. And maybe we can be, as we overcome some of those challenges, we will be referenced as those other policies have developed. So there's lots of work to do there. I was curious, the percentage of bags that went in as a landfill, as a garbage bag, what do we see as being replaced as? Has any of those other jurisdictions specifically addressed that? I was just looking for an example, because this is something that I've heard from some residents, just, oh, let's recycle my garbage bags. Now, what do I do for that? Kind of speculative, I know, but if there are any examples from the other.
So just to clarify through the chair, this is what will people essentially put their garbage in? So this bylaw will move residents to either using paper bags, depending on what type of garbage they're creating, or buying bags.
Councillor Stoner?
So there's a request here for 15...
So there's a request here for fifteen, sort of fifteen thousand dollars to be funded from solid waste utility contingencies. Christine is not sitting there. Do we have any sense of how much is actually in the contingency fund and what that looks like?
It's more than fifteen thousand five hundred dollars.
I should add to what Chris said is that she is the one who recommended that is where the money comes from for 2019. Yes.
And then I have a question in terms of like effective date versus enforcement dates. And I noticed that some of the other jurisdictions had effective dates and then perhaps the way was provided from the effective date versus the enforcement date. And so I'm wondering if, one of my thoughts was maybe we make the effective date January first, 2020, but we don't do enforcement until April first, 2020. And then that allows us to consider the enforcement requirements and bylaw requirements in the 2020 budget more fulsomely without reverberating the 2019 work plan for bylaw enforcement officers. I'm just curious to hear staff's thoughts on that proposal.
Yeah, I think that is, that would be a very reasonable. Certainly over the winter, we will have a little bit more plastic for this, but in the spring and summer and fall, it would be very hard to start by the winter.
One more. And then the other piece is the recommendation with regards to writing letters to the province and UBCM. I recognize we're going into a federal election, and so it may be useless to write a promise or a letter to the feds, but given that they have initiated a more national approach to this, is there any benefit to more the merrier, less writing letters to the feds as well or UBCM? Is this putting out voice out there, or do we really see this coming back down to the province as like the feds might set out the general direction and it'll go to the province in terms of implementation?
I think our approach so far has been to work with the province as the environmental regulator in BC. And the, I guess the announcement from the feds was a bit of a surprise, but as you say, they've now risen and won't be sitting again until after the election. So perhaps we wait until after the election to see who we address the letter to.
Ms. Glaney.
Through the chair, the contingency and solid waste utility bylaws, twenty-five thousand. I know, I'm sorry, Gary. I just. The answer, I get to the second one. Is it?
So I guess two thoughts that I had before we start entertaining resolutions, and I think we'll probably do them one at a time. I just wanted to make sure that as we talk about stakeholder engagement, we aren't forgetting what the accessibility community and I think probably the students that put this forward. I want to make sure that, you know, one sort of side of the issue isn't pulling it in one direction too much, that, you know, maybe we don't want to go full public engagement at that piece, but I'd like to make sure personally that there's a little bit of all sides, you know, pulling the regulations we're coming up with. That's not just around what the businesses necessarily want. The other, you know, for me, I also see this, just the importance of this as reinforcing what I think is Squamish's brand and what's seen in our sector strategy and so on. So for me, that's another reason why it's important to pursue this. Does someone want to move? Or is there anything more that you feel you need from council discussion at this point?
I don't think so. I think I don't, I put it up to whether the effective date resolution, we should loop in the enforcement date as well into that resolution would be my only point.
Counsel Stoner.
I have a follow-up question for staff before we start moving through resolutions. Now that we know that there's only twenty-five thousand dollars in the contingency fund, and you're asking for fifteen of it, can you go back and actually, I think there was a slide on a breakdown of that fifteen thousand? We've committed one thousand of it already.
Oh, yes, that one.
Yeah. I will just state that I'm a little bit nervous going forward, moving fifteen, using fifteen thousand of that at this point, especially knowing where we are relatively speaking with our COA strategy and how much we have to do. So I'm curious if there's another number that you might be comfortable throwing out that is a little bit lower than fourteen thousand.
You can say that.
Sorry, Chair, just to clarify, the organics ban and the other outreach work was fully funded and budgeted for as part of the plan for 2019. The single-use plastics came up in early 2019 and therefore wasn't budgeted for. And so this isn't cannibalizing the work for the, in fact, if anything, this is making sure we don't cannibalize the work on the organics ban and that important as our waste work.
So Counsel Herford and then Counsel Anderson. Counsel Anderson.
Yes, maybe I'll just pose this general question before we get into the text of the resolutions. So I do recognize that these initiatives are going to be coming back to us in September and for budget, and I think that's prudent. I know on page thirteen of our package, that the staff report, just one part of a larger conversation about sustainability and solid waste management in the community is represented by what we're talking about here today. Other solid waste initiatives proposed to be undertaken by the Sustainability Coordinator will be impacted. So my general question is, what is the, given the relative impacts of this waste stream and considering other, we're talking about hundreds of tons, other problematic aspects of our solid waste stream involve thousands of tons, tens of thousands of tons. They also involve land, acres, major stakeholders waiting to have dialogue with the district. We have in fact an economic development strategy highlighting clean tech, and that involves raw materials potentially from our waste stream. So there's lots of work to do in our solid waste. So Counselor Stoner has referred to impact on bylaw enforcement, but what about the impact on staffing for these other challenges? We are going to be discussing with staff of the landfill in an upcoming meeting. We're not sure yet about the context there, but so my general question is, what is the impact on the work plan for solid waste when we've got major issues with larger waste streams that also are significant with respect to greenhouse gas emissions, for example?
Through the chair?
Oh, okay. Sorry, I missed the handoff. The impact of bringing this ban has been significant. The organics ban work and a lot of other important work has been put on hold to get as far as we have today. Most of that impact going forward will be lessened by the fact that we will have some money to hire a facilitator to help with the actual workshops. We have the posting up now for the second sustainability coordinator, three-quarter position to help on the outreach. Shannon's time now needs to go into focusing on very high-impact items that we can no longer ignore. But there has certainly been a significant impact by bringing forward this ban, as short as possible.
May I follow up just and ask specifically? When we discussed solid waste planning earlier this spring and winter, we discussed construction and demolition waste and the opportunity of the new staff being hired to dedicate some time to educational programs that would, targeting the construction and demolition waste stream. Could you speak specifically to where that stands? Do you think that that prospect might be impacted by focus on this particular initiative?
Yes, it would.
Thank you.
So Counsel, Counsel Stoner.
Just, Counsel Anderson, to your point, I think that although it will have an impact on like delaying perhaps some of those other things, I think there is efficiency gains to be made with respect to joining the single-use plastics component up with the organics component because they are the same community that are being targeted. So there's some efficiency gains there, I would suspect, and I'm trying to make that wrong, in terms of the outreach and education materials that we can develop and pinpoint to that same community.
I'll just say I'm skeptical.
I will move the first staff's recommendation with a minor amendment, that staff dropped the bylaw with an effective date as January first, 2020, and an enforcement date of April first, 2020.
So that's the second.
So, sorry, that's the second. I skipped over the first.
One second.
Well, how about we take the first one first? Yeah. I'm really confused.
I'll move the first one.
Okay, Counsel Stoner, who's the first one? Anyone going to second?
Counsel Herford.
Okay, any discussion? And we are, that staff engaged with stakeholders, et cetera. Counsel Anderson.
I'll just again voice that I think it's prudent that a check-in be done with council in September is what is proposed in terms of a report from this stakeholder engagement.
Counsel Stoner.
And I'll just speak to Counsel Pettingill's previous comment of also looping in the youth component in that community engagement. I also think it'd be an interesting perspective for them to understand more how that engagement with businesses can happen and what those conversations look like in trying to try and implement some of these things that they've brought forward to us. So if that is possible, recognizing that it's over the summer, we may have lost them all, but I do really appreciate that perspective that Counsel Pettingill brought up.
Counsel French.
Sure. I'll add that I really like the phrase I heard a few minutes ago, "social pressure." I think Counsel Herford has hit on the best and most effective change tool for this particular issue. And I don't know how that necessarily fits into this motion, but I'm eager to say it, so I am. Thank you. And I think defining these stakeholders is important, and I like the comments around some of the youth, maybe the ones that came to see us and sort of gave us some social pressure on this issue as well as, and so, and also the accessibility. I wanted to see, I didn't see sort of called out specifically in this piece, but that's, I'm sure that's more considered than other than this, so happy to support this one.
Okay, I'll call a question. All those in favor, opposed, motion carries. So Counsel Stoner wanted to move the next.
I'll do that. That staff dropped the bylaw with the effective date of January first, 2020, and an enforcement date of April first, 2020.
Counsel Herford, any discussion?
Seeing none, call a question. All those in favor, opposed, motion carries, thank you. So the next item is the funding. Now, does someone want to move that as is or with a?
I'll move that.
Counsel French, second. Counsel Stoner, any discussion? Counsel French.
With twenty-five thousand dollars in that contingency and this amount of money being dedicated, in my mind, that's exactly what this money, that contingency account is for. Things that come up, this has come up. And happy to hear that we're not cannibalizing other buckets to fund this. The money was there, it was budgeted for something like this, that's what we're dealing with. I think it's totally appropriate.
Yeah, I'll also acknowledge that the contingency fund, we're spending a high percentage of it with this, but we've taken it on, we've taken on lots that we need to do. So I'm happy to support this.
Counsel Stoner.
Yeah, happy to sort of, as well, recognizing that this has come a left field and was not planned for in the 2019, our plan. So appreciate the flexibility in being able to make a move on it. There's one small component within the proposal that I'd just like to highlight that suggests perhaps doing branded reusable bags, which I will just flag is a little bit of a like question to me in terms of, it also notes in the report how many reusable takes to make those branded bags. There are already lots of them out there. So that's my only hesitation on that point, is maybe we should reconsider doing free branded bags, but I'll leave it to the experts.
Thank you. Further comments? Seeing none, I'll call a question. All those in favor, opposed, motion carries. And the next one on ongoing support and education and enforcement, that'll be considered in the 2020 budget. Counsel Stoner, Counsel Herford seconds. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call a question. All those in favor, opposed, motion carries. The next is the letter to the minister, the SLRD and UBCM, with a bunch of specific asks. Does someone want to move that?
Happy to move that one.
Counsel Anderson? Counsel Stoner, any discussion?
Yes, as I've already expressed, I applaud this recommendation, and it followed from our discussion last time. And with the significant research that staff has undertaken, there is opportunity to cite key reports and submissions to the province that have already been made. The Retail Council of Canada refers to the Metro Vancouver letter, so you'll have ample opportunity to draw upon your own research. And I think this is a very important initiative, and I particularly like the second bullet there. I'll just reference that, the development of a provincial single-use item reduction strategy. And that is something highlighted in the Retail Council of Canada brief as well.
Counsel Stoner.
Yeah, and more than happy to support that. I think that doing this piecemeal municipality by municipality is not ideal, but it's what we're, what we need to do right now. And so I'm happy to advocate to higher levels of government. The only other thing that I'll flag is if it's worth bringing forward a resolution to UBCM on the matter. So more than just writing a letter, if it's perhaps worth bringing forward a resolution, so just something to think about and for a council really to consider as we go into UBCM.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call a question. All those in favor, opposed, motion carries. Final item on monitoring other jurisdictions' actions. Counsel Herford moves that. Counsel French, seconds. Any discussion?
I'd just like to say that I agree with Counsel Stoner, we need to be, this isn't ideal the way that it's being handled at the moment where each municipality or jurisdiction is sort of piecemealed, but there has been lots of smart people working on this, and we can continue to learn from them and add our learning to this as well as we move through it. So happy to support this.
Counsel French.
Yeah, and just to add to that, I think that this is a demonstration of how local communities can really lead big picture. The province is following us. Eventually, I'm hoping that we'll be a uniform across the province where all communities will have bylaws that line up with what the province is up to so that when visitors are coming here or when we're visiting other communities, everything is all the same and it's consistent in, from the perspective of how to manage not just the single-use plastics we're dealing with here, but garbage more generally.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call a question. All those in favor, opposed, motion carries. So we are, please, we're on schedule. We're in order of five-day bylaw break, so 10:35 sharp. I'll take a short recess. Thank you, everyone, and welcome back to this pool. Right, also my fault, it took a few extra minutes, but we'll get back to it with the camping regulation bylaw. Goes over to staff.
Staff is just slow on the technology. So if you don't mind, just one second. Slide two.
Good afternoon, near, no, chair and council. My name is Natasha Bulick. I'm the Senior Director of Community Services, and with me is Chris Baker, the supervisor for the bylaw enforcement and animal control team. Just before we get started, I just want to really thank the vehicle residents of Squamish who have done fantastic. who have done fantastic engagement with us since the last time we came to council. They really helped us think through the implications of what it would mean from a bylaw enforcement perspective to their community, which had not really been previously plus in the engagement and consideration of impact. So thank you to those folks. We've also continued to do some good engagement with the residents, resident groups, and the Access Society, who have been vocal on this issue and are certainly important stakeholders. So we're coming forward today with some revisions to the bylaw that we previously brought forward in April and May, and to have some discussion with council about where you'd like to see, where you'd like to see this go prior to coming forward for second and third reading. And just a reminder about what the objective of this bylaw is. It's about giving enforcement officers a tool. So we continue to do education about good camping practices and risk reduction in our public activities to protect our natural assets, and so this gives us an extra tool to be able to have those conversations and drive people towards designated campsites as a risk reduction mechanism for wildlife interface and wildfire hazards, as well as neighborhood and social issues as well. And the enforcement approach, as I mentioned, is about high-risk and high-impact locations and poor camping practices. We are a complaint-driven response team. Voluntary compliance and education are always the first course of action, and normally compliance can be achieved, but it is helpful to have an additional enforcement tool when those approaches aren't effective. So following our meeting in May, we made some amendments to the applicable areas. So previously, we had recommended that the bylaw apply to all public land in the district, in the district boundaries, and would then repeal the parks use bylaw as well and apply to parkland as well. It's been brought to my attention that we left in a reference to the parks use bylaw in the current version, and that is incorrect. The current version, as we're proposing, should not be repealing the parks use bylaw. That would be dealt with separately in a separate discussion, so just want to make that clear. So the application of the bylaw, as it's coming forward right now for discussion, limits the application of the bylaw to the Crown Parcels, which are adjacent to the Mamquan Forest Service Road, as well as the Wildlife Management Estuary. In the Schedule A, that area is listed as estuary, but it actually is more correctly should be labeled Wildlife Management Area. Similar areas, but the lines are a little bit different about where the boundaries are. So the risk of this approach, this sort of targeted spot approach, is that it sort of moves the problem. Initially, a year ago, when we started having these conversations with our colleagues at Flynn Row and the Access Society and the Conservation Officer Service, this was our first sort of approach, was that we just target these particular areas that are high density and therefore are the highest risk and give us challenges. But the feedback really was that, that we were moving the problem around, and so it would be more effective if we have the ability to have a more blanket approach, and we can target resources where they're needed and be more agile in that. But as we know, coming forward in May with that approach, that was not supportable by council at that time, and they asked us, you asked us to go away and revise our approach. So we're coming back with this option. It's not perfect, as I mentioned, but it does give us a tool to be able to handle the areas where we do see the most challenges. This, we may consider this as sort of interim measure, so that we're able to get on top of risk in the current camping season, watch for impacts, and if it does become, you know, moving the problem around, we may want to revisit the application. Concurrently, we're developing an engagement process to have some policy and program options for a safe and sustainable model for year-round vehicle residence. So when that gets a little bit further down the line, it's possible that we could revisit the application of this bylaw with some comfort that the parallel issue of affordable housing is being managed in a more sustainable way. So the boundary is where we've set on the schedule right now. There's no limit to how we could draw the lines on the map. We could, you know, include or exclude lots of different areas depending on council's direction. Currently, we've depicted the Crown Land within municipal boundaries in the two highest-impact areas, as I mentioned. There is also unserved Crown Land up near the pit site that we did not include, anticipating that that would be, it is quite far out, and that the number of vehicles that would go there would be quite a bit less than what are down in the early sections of the Forest Service Road, and also that the folks who are going to be making it all that way up to the pit site are probably more experienced campers, and therefore the risk would be lower for unintended impacts of camping. But we can change that. The other thing I wanted to flag is that the Wildlife Management Area is what is currently identified as the sort of, the other side of town, applicable area, but we can move those lines around and do a custom polygon. There's no necessary reason that it has to be the Wildlife Management Area. It's really just about protecting that ecologically and environmentally sensitive region, so we can move the lines if council directs us to. Another thing I want to mention, and this certainly has come through feedback from neighborhood residents in Valley Cliff particularly, that the area surrounding Powerhouse Springs and bordering the back of Ravenswood Plateau is not included in the applicable areas, and that's because those are, those are actually private parcels. I think they're often interpreted as being public land because there isn't much on them, but, and because there is quite a bit of camping there, but we don't have the same jurisdiction in the private parcels. However, we can enforce camping on private parcels through the landowner if it's a problem, and so it's an option to us within our current available bylaw regime. It's also suggested that we can label the private parcels on the schedule just to communicate to users that that's actually, it's not the camping is permitted there, it's just not under this particular bylaw that it's not permitted. So that might be helpful in terms of a compliance approach. So next steps, we're going to have some discussion today, get some feedback, and if council wishes, we can proceed to second and third reading. And following that, we'll do officer training and public education to get started with enforcement.
Okay, thank you. I see we have a few people in the audience with an interest in this. It is a committed hole, so we can invite some people with questions and so on, and just given where we are in the time. I think there's a bit of room for that, so if you would like to have an opportunity to ask some questions, I would invite you to take one of the chairs at the table. I will start with questions from council, but if there is something that you'd like to ask or have a couple thoughts you want to share after council has their questions, please do come to the table. Counselor Stoner?
Seeking clarification on part 3.3 of the bylaw that reads, section 3.1 and 3.2 of this bylaw do not prohibit any activity on a highway, a park, or a road. And it goes on to put a detail, but my understanding is that we have a bylaw that speaks to the fact that you can't camp on municipal roadways?
That's correct. The traffic bylaw.
Okay, so this specific bylaw does not prohibit activity on highways, but the other bylaw does?
Yes.
That's true. So you can, you cannot camp on municipal roadways?
That's correct. There's, and it's, there's hours associated with that. Yes. It's, yeah, under the traffic bylaw, and it's, the violation is like, park to sleep, something like that. There's an hour of hours defined, so it's not useful during the day.
Counselor Herbert?
Thank you. I like the idea of calling out the private land on Schedule A, just because there is a, well, there's just a lot of pieces, not really moving pieces, but there's a lot of stationary pieces of land there, but we want to make sure that people know that that's not, that's not public land. The road, I've been thinking about this a fair bit, because in the bylaw, it says up to the pit site. In Schedule A, we've just highlighted the spot that doesn't quite get me into the bridge over the Squamish, so the roadway and the pullouts, like how specific do we need to be with in regards to these little, these little pullouts and just the start of a spur road and this sort of thing in this context? Because if the road were covered, does that cover the little pullouts? Because I know that as you go along, wherever, even in the highlighted areas, they're not, the majority of the issues are right on, they're right next to the roadway. There's not really roads for you to go, to go further for these people, vehicle camping. So do you feel that we're sufficiently covered under the, under the other bylaw for, as that relates to this?
Through the chair. Yeah, if we have both the roadway covered and then the adjacent parcels, then, you know, depending on where that, that, like how far the pullout goes into the adjacent parcel, I guess then the one bylaw or the other, it does increase the complexity.
I just, I see that effectively where we've highlighted on this map are the Crown, the Crown Parcels, but I think it doesn't really relate the effect, the effect that we're, that we're looking, that we're looking for with this. So I acknowledge that maybe there's some education materials or that may be looked differently than the Schedule A, which is very specific to these Crown Parcels, but I'm wondering if there's value in drawing that out to the pit site as reference, but it's not even, it's cut off from Schedule A, you know, can't even see where the pit site is on this Schedule A. So at the very least, we need to expand the map to show where that is for reference, but it is further than the two and a half K that we're highlighting here, because I believe that site's over 10, if you have the last, if you had exact, last one.
Fourteen.
Fourteen, probably, yeah. So just those two things over quick.
I just want to pick up on a couple of things you said, and thank you for those points. So the, it is not a municipal roadway, it is a provincial roadway that's maintained by the province. However, we do have some tools in terms of impeding industrial traffic and usage of that roadway that we could draw on. The areas that are the private parcels alongside the road that are not crowned, are not indicated here, as Chris mentioned, that would increase the complexity of enforcement, but if it becomes a problem, we do have tools, including, you know, if they're quite a bit into the private land parcels, we can work with the landowner. If it's on the road, we can work through the industrial traffic provisions. In terms of the pit site, it's actually not relevant to this, the bylaw, so in the public engagement communications, we certainly want to include that, and could include it as a, you know, a reference point on the map, just so it's consistent and aware, but because we wouldn't be enforcing that far down, the idea is that we're not enforcing that far down, then it wouldn't be relevant to necessarily highlight it in the applicable areas on the bylaw prohibiting the activity, if that makes sense.
So I'm just going to be reading through, I thought I saw it referenced in the bylaw itself, and that's why I wanted to, Schedule A, it shouldn't be wrong.
Can I go to Counselor Anderson? Oh, through the chair. It could have been left in, like, we were kind of rushing to get this together, we could have left a reference in there, but I think just to clarify, that was the only exempt area before, and now we have, we have most of the district, like by square meters or whatever, is exempt, so there's, it then becomes redundant to highlight and make that there. Counselor Anderson?
Yes, I'd just like to first of all, comment on the Wildlife Management Area or Squamish Estuary component of the Schedule A map. I'd like to suggest that we do stick to the legal map, which is as it is presently delineated in the draft Schedule A, and the reason for that is that that legal map is produced by the province of B.C. It is Crown Land, and is a product of the 2007 management plan for the School Willem Wildlife Management Area. And when that 2007 plan was concluded, there was kind of a work plan set out which hasn't yet been implemented, and that is to put together an advisory committee and further rules and management strategies for the Wildlife Management Area. So that I would be concerned that, to not change that boundary, because we would not, we want to stimulate that discussion on the part of the stakeholders that will be engaged in that through the Estuary Management Committee or otherwise. And one of the issues that has always been talked about as needing attention is camping on the part of the Estuary Management Committee and the constituencies interested to implement that 2007 plan with further measures. So I suggest we stick to that boundary, and it is very practical and does capture all of the areas of sensitive habitat, like. It also draws the province in, it is their map, it is a legal map produced by the province, the Wildlife Management Area. Secondly, regarding the Mamquan Forest Service Road, we have had concerns expressed by letter and otherwise regarding concerns mostly around fire, fire risks. Photos have been sent to us of campsites, and indeed, cause for concern. It strikes me that we are also receiving comments from Ring Creek, although because I know I've spoken to one person, resident of Ring Creek, because she feels she's outside of the District of Squamish, she doesn't feel she has really the privilege to express her views as she might. Her concerns, she's a longtime resident there, is fire risks, and she has a number of observations. In conclusion, it seems to me that we need to draw in the Community Forest Agreement, and it is in evolution. We have, my colleagues, Counselor Stoner and Counselor Herbert, as well as Mayor Elliott, are on the Board of Directors, but we also have a manager appointed who is very experienced in managing camping pressures in the tree farm license owned by the Squamish Nation, namely Jeff Fisher. So that as this dialogue and set of initiatives evolves, I think the Community Forest Agreement, the Community Forest entity will be part of our community toolbox, and it will also be, there will be responsibilities and opportunities for the Community Forest managers to address camping issues at Ring Creek and at the Forest Service Road. So there's a resource there in our current management team for the Community Forest, well experienced in managing camping pressures. And also just finally note that in speaking to members of the rock climbing community who go down to places like Smith Rock in Oregon, and you're adjacent to or within areas managed by the Bureau of Land Management in Oregon, which is a similar entity with similar responsibilities as our Forest Service, we have tenure holders and forest operators, and we need to really look more closely at the kinds of experiences, the experiences involved there and measures, and I'll just leave that as an observation. The rock climbing community people have told me, down there, you come to play, you pay. Five dollars, eight dollars, but you pay, and you may have to drive up to 10K to a camping site, but that's how it is, and that's a very common experience in the United States in many national forests, national parks, and Bureau of Land Management areas.
I have a question. You mentioned we could redraw some of those lines. If we were to try these lines, theoretically, it's just two meetings to change them in the future, once the bylaws improve, but in practical terms, what's your sense of how difficult it would be to adjust these boundaries if we found something emerged that we didn't think of and we need to redraw?
You mean in terms of enforcement and communication with the public or procedurally?
Well, both. We see, oh, shoot, we didn't capture something with these boundaries, and we need to adjust the boundaries and enforcement and so on. Do you have a sense of practice between that change?
I mean, it would be similar to any bylaw revision. We've come forward for discussion and go through three readings, and from an enforcement perspective, it would be a little bit of a challenge in terms of public education, and you know, we want this to be, an enforceable bylaw, something that's clear and easy to understand, so we wouldn't want to change it like all the time, but having some, you know, good messaging out to the community and some good clear signage, we're not locking ourselves in by any means. And, you know, since this is something we're trying for the first time, we do expect that we'll have to monitor impacts and may have to adjust as we go.
Do we have any feedback from our fire department in terms of wildfire risk that more or less that these changes pose?
Yeah, so we, Phil, do you want? Yeah, so we, Bill, do you want to have time to?
I know someone to go over it.
Yeah. You go.
I suppose what we are seeing is we are called out frequently during the summer, in particular, during the dry months, July, August. These are areas where we will frequently be called out for wildfire, so that does address some of that, um, concern, yes. Could I answer your question?
Well, my sense is that we're, um, shrinking the, the exclusion zones that we previously had, uh, proposed. And so do you have a sense of, you know, the relative change in risk, um, if we were to proceed with the sort of broader enforcement as opposed to this, or is this, you know, what was sort of leaving off the table aren't heavily used places anyway, so maybe it's not a huge change or?
Um, there's a lot there to sort through. To some degree, I suppose, when you're looking at camping, it's a whole other issue, because once we get into drier months, campfires aren't permitted, and that's largely the one we're addressing it. So regardless of where camping is permitted, that's a whole different issue anyway. I, I think from a campfire point of view, campfires are one thing, and we do enforce that. Unfortunately, just the way we're staffed and our resources, we can only enforce on an as-called basis, but we will be doing that regardless. We get, our community is great for addressing concerns about wildfires, bring them to our attention, or not wildfires, but campfires, bring them to our attention, and we address that. Um, that will continue regardless of where the lines are drawn. So, um, these are our biggest areas where we do get called the most frequently. I, I believe, I haven't run the stats, but just, um, from what I, there's a term for this. Intuitively, thank you. Intuitively, these are where I believe we get called the most often. Mamquan Forest Service Road is certainly one of those. And so it'll give us, um, hopefully cut down on that. I'm just not sure that I'm answering your question.
Can I just add to this? Um, so I, I don't know if I'm putting too fine a point out here, but the, um, Bill mentioned that we don't have the resources to be like sitting in the bushes waiting for somebody to light an illegal fire. What we respond when we hear that there's a fire, at sometimes we don't get called or it's too late, or, you know, that, that's just the nature of reactive, um, reactive enforcement. With, with this approach, we're able to make sure that the high density, high risk areas, people aren't there. So they can't have campfires if there's not very many of them there or none of them there at all. So it's, it's preventative and it helps us get, get in front of the risk rather than behind it.
Councilor Stoller?
Uh, just quickly, so, um, recognize that this is a bit of a three sixty on what we had previously, and I think one of the concerns of the enforcement piece is still where do people go? So, um, recognizing that we're identifying here areas where we're going to be focusing enforcement, but we still haven't identified places where people go. So that risk of moving people on to the unknown, where are we at in terms of addressing that?
Yep.
So, I mean, the first part of that, we've done, we've done, um, some great work with Tourism Squamish to, and they've, they've developed a widget that's on their, on their, um, their website, and it can also be put on, on any number of other websites, and it's updated simultaneously. So that's to help, um, people find, uh, campgrounds, so that, that directs people towards any of the designated campgrounds inside the, uh, the district. Uh, that would still be the, the preference. That's, that's where the, the risk is best managed. And then as far as a longer term, like the, the ideas like safe lots and, uh, permitting those, those kind of issues, uh, that's going to be, uh, part of that, that larger discussion that we've already started with the Vehicle Residence Association, and that, um, it just isn't really possible in the timelines to have that, that whole, uh, program laid out alongside a tool that we can use to try and mitigate some of this risk for this summer. So, um, not seeing any further question. Oh, Councilor?
The private landowners, uh, along, I'm thinking Cherry, Cherry Drive and close in these, these inner place areas, which are a lot of private, has there been work with them, uh, those landowners previously? They complained to us about the district, to, about people on the property, like, how's that navigated? That, that doesn't appear to be much signage there that says, probably anything in my experience coming out there, but I haven't looked at it in this context specifically.
Yeah, we, we haven't worked extensively with them, with those landowners. We last year did coordinate enforcement with our NRO and COS partners, so that was the, the vehicle we used to manage camping in those areas, was to work through the NROs. Um, from a bylaw enforcement perspective, we, we didn't apply that tool, but we simply can.
Definitely heard from the, from the residents there, that that's one of the primary concerns. And I see this, um, just sort of giving a push to those, to those areas, is the, the first knock, I'm sure there's been knock-on effects, but specifically in Valley, that first exclusion zone, I think is going to encourage people to be right next to the neighborhood there, which isn't, I don't think is anyone's preference, so. I suppose in our, you know, our educational, um, literature, we work on, um, highlighting that, sort of what's up, wrote its springs, water spring, car springs road, um, as, uh, as well as Mamquan Forest Service Road out to Raffuse as being, even though it's already covered under other areas, as being, you know, no camping area that's separate from this bylaw, but part of the, the bylaw, sort of regulations.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you. And, um, prior to coming back again, we can make sure that we've had conversations with the landowners in that area about what they're prepared to do and how they'd like to see this going. Um, so we have that information for you.
So maybe we'll go around the table, do it clockwise, um, just in terms of any thoughts or questions, if you can introduce yourself and?
First of all, I would just like to commend Council for taking a step back from the last meeting and give all some reconsideration. I think that was good. Just, I just have some comments and some suggestions, that's all. Not particularly about the proposed bylaw. The, uh, some aspects that are not really being talked much about are growth. We have the situation that we do today, um, but it's quite plausible that 10 years from now, there could be twice as many people trying to get into Squamish. I wrote the Squamish Climbing Strategy Report to Council, which was 10 years ago, and the, the growth was figured at five to seven percent. That was the best figure anyone could come up with, and it was plausible. But then, within three or four years, less than weeks, it's got a few tours, and B.C. Parks told, told me I was too conservative, and was actually higher than that. And that was in part because, uh, the, um, because the new highway have proven to be a major magnet to people to Squamish. So the, the, it's a changing world, socioeconomic conditions are not likely to improve, so I, I would urge Squamish to plan for what, what sort of situation do we want five years from now? Because it's coming, and there will be a lot more people. Something that Council, Madison Center, Grand America is, is, is appropriate, actually, is because in the United States, the Western U.S., they've had way more experience in Squamish, and addressed things like this for years, partly because they got involved in enforcement early, um, but they're also a lot more sophisticated than we are. Squamish, it's all new for Squamish, and Squamish has got complicated geography, which is difficult to manage politically as well. But there are some good lessons to be learned. Rules are, in places like Smith Rock, the rules are really clear. But what's also true is the fees are very modest, you know, modest fees. So it's the principle of paying something which sort of gets people's attention. And something that's not directly related, but one reason why growth has happened so much in this world is, um, over the last 10 years in particular, but going back more than that, the number of people who are entering climbing, I'll just use that example, overwhelmingly are more women than men coming into climbing. That's not relevant to this, but it's, it's part of the considerations of who comes here and why. And, uh, from what I've seen, it's not, not making a change either. The, but when they do get here, Squamish on the website says, well, we have a thousand campsites. But that is, in my opinion, really misleading, because it's like saying, well, we have a thousand cars for sale, to what, you're not telling people this happened in my Ferraris, which are far too expensive for most people. Some are simply not available, provincial campgrounds like Porto and ours, they're already booked, you're not going to get in. And, um, some are, and I would include Raffuse Creek, not entirely safe places in my opinion. That leaves a far smaller number of campsites, and the idea of having an app to help direct people is, is great, but there are not enough campsites in Squamish that are affordable for people of this type. This is even now, before growth. And it's not to say that everyone has to be forced into a campground, because there are lots of good reasons to just want to stay in your van. And for the record, I don't live in my van in Squamish, but I do when I'm not here. It's me. The, and on, on issues like fire, as well as the rules, should we say, um, I think Squamish can, uh, make a great deal of progress on education, but like deep education. Um, I mean, even today, people will come to Squamish by the hundreds on the weekend and leave and never know anything about this. They, they, so to develop an ongoing program so that it's hardly possible to come to Squamish and park and get here and not know what the rules are. If you go to, uh, Smith Rocks in Oregon, you know what the rules are before you even left Blacktop just about, and that's good. Um, and fire issues would also play into this. I mean, you know, we all live at risk, this, and it's serious, but, um, the, the more that, uh, leaflets, pamphlets, programming, signs, signs intended to encourage people, I think, can go and do a lot of good. Because for the most part, the people who come here in this category, they are, they are honest, they're good people, they're not crime doers. And, uh, but if people don't know what the rules are, uh, then they're hard, it's not too easy. And just one last, uh, point, which, uh, I will be brave to raise this subject, um, the, uh, on the, the spit road, the dike, um, and I better make my credentials clear here, before I say this, but in, in 1999, I published for the province, the Squamish Estuary Management Plan, the original plan. I wasn't the author, I was the publisher, but I've been involved in the nitty gritty of estuary affairs for a long time, and I am there several times a week. When you, uh, when you leave the, the Blacktop and you, you drive into the spit, there's the sharp left-hand turn, where then you start driving south. For the next 700 meters, that road is wider than a fallen highway. Now, the game changer in this is, which is why I'm bringing it up, is that the new Fisheries Covert has got concrete barriers there. That actually has created an interesting physical demarcation between the really sensitive stuff down the south, where there's no space for cars, uh, and just a few parking areas, and the really wide north. And I would, um, perhaps it's a bit much for now, but I would suggest maybe put it in the bank for the future, because that 700 meters, um, is, everything is visible, everything is containable, everything is patroliable, and if there's any wrongdoing, you can see it from hundreds of meters away, actually. It, it almost seems to me that it could be a good, a good venue. And also the forest on each side of the dike drops off steeply, so you basically don't see people going into the forest, unlike the Mamquan, where it's easy to do that. So it almost looks like a really convenient, containable area where, uh, everything's visible, it's a strip, and you can see it on the map, by the way, uh, the, whether, on the polygon, where the road is running exactly due north south, at the top of the polygon, uh, and before it starts to turn the bend, that, that's the stretch, yeah, of 700 meters. So I would just like to offer that as a suggestion down the road, because, uh, I'm a big fan of estuary, and I have been all my life in Squamish, but I really don't think home would come to the estuary there. It's already a busy road, by the way. There's traffic moving through there every, every two or three minutes, if that's a normal. So that's it.
Thank you. And I, I'm going to try and keep it around five minutes a week, and I'm just going to be conscious of the time and everything we have to get through here, but Thomasina, if you have some thoughts?
Yeah, I'm Thomasina Pidgen. I just want to fix something that Eric said earlier about the you pay, you stay, you pay, about Smith Rocks. It's actually not true. There's a lot of climbing areas that have VLM, VLM land surrounded them, which are free, so you don't have to pay, you just have to drive a little further. Um, and also there's a lot of communities, uh, like Bishop, Leavenworth, which is just five hours from here, that has a lot of, um, land. It's, I mean, I believe it's municipal land, but you can stay there for free, and it's no problem. And, um, one of the reasons why I mention this is just because I think it's important that we think about, like, what kind of experience we want people to have. Like, do we want them to have the experience of being in, say, Whistler, which is very rigid and expensive and elite in my head? Or do you want them to kind of experience what Squamish means to us? And it means to me for like a long time, just like something that's like, I don't know, you could say, you could call it wild Squamish, like something like that, which can be experienced, like, you know, with respect and a lot of leave no trace education. And in these areas like Bend, Leavenworth, Maple Canyon, like all over the place, there's, there's free places to park, to, to stay overnight. But, um, there's also one thing that's going, it doesn't happen, that's, uh, leave no trace education. So like, for example, if the powerhouse area is a concern, um, why not, I know it's private land, so maybe some signs are needed to say that it's private, but for the areas that are crown land, like, how about some leave no trace signs, some education signs, positive reinforcement of how to behave? Also, there's no bathroom down there, and there's a lot of groups that aren't just climbers. There's motorbike, motorbike people, ATVers, uh, people hiking, just enjoying nature, and they, everyone goes in the bathroom, and there's no bathroom there. So that's like, that's an area of concern for toilet, for, um, camping. And the problem is pooping from campers, then why not just put a toilet? Yeah, um, hmm, the, yeah, I just feel like there's also, like, again, the neighborhood thing. I think there's, there needs to be like, like the Whistler, wild Squamish thing, like we need to have a balance of like accepting people that live in their vehicles, and that includes businesses and neighbors. Like, we just, like, I don't see why we need to be hidden, like, why we need to be put like in a certain location. And so I want to commend the staff for, um, seeing, seeing that and recognizing, like, that there's different ways of living, and, uh, I think that's really, it's a broad way of thinking, in that, you know, people don't need to be hidden or, you know, stuffed into some Forest Service Road that's like 14 miles of the road. Nor do we have to be hidden from neighborhoods, because I feel like, anyway, people can behave really responsibly if they know how, you know? And I think education is one thing that the bylaw missed totally, um, that needs, and I know it's not related to the bylaw, but it's, it is something that the district needs to work on, is just more signage about how to behave. I mean, including at the spit and the estuary and all that. Like, I was walking in the estuary, um, last year, and I needed to go to the bathroom, and I was, I wasn't even camping there, I was just walking, and there's no toilet. So I mean, that's just one thing to think about, because maybe the poop isn't always from campers, it could be just other people walking around and enjoying the area. Yeah, and one question I had was, uh, and Natasha said earlier, if there's problems, they needed to revisit the application? And I'm just curious, like, what, um, like, how, like, how safe are we? Like, you know, I just wanted to, what does that mean, like revisiting the application? Like, is it, does it mean tightening the boundaries or expanding the boundaries and?
Well, it depends what the issue is, I guess. Unintended consequences, like we talked, sorry, through the chair. Um, unintended consequences, like we talked about moving the problem. If everybody shows up in some other area of, of, you know, intense density, then we have to look at, do we need to make that an applicable area as well? Or do we want to maybe reconsider this idea of a, um, kind of a broader? Or do we want to maybe reconsider this idea of a kind of a broader net so that we're not just moving the problem? It might be something like that. And the process for that would be similar, that we would do some engagement with stakeholders, we would come to council for discussion, and then it would move forward for reconsidered adoption subsequently. So modifications, as to councillor Peddick's point, don't just happen. They go through public process, just like this.
Okay, so yeah, so I think, like, I feel like this bylaw isn't perfect. I think one thing that will happen is that the problem will be moved around. I've already noticed it a little bit myself. And again, I think that people, it's okay for people to be in their vehicles in public spaces. Public space is ours, it's our space. But if there's no sign that tells them how to behave. Like, for example, I ran into some people from, they were from Mexico, that were in their vehicles, and they had bear tractors under their car. And I told them, "No, we can't really be doing that here." And, you know, I tried to explain the situation and how important it was to behave in a certain way. And it ended up being like a back and forth, and they just didn't understand it. And they were like, "Well, what right do you have to tell me that?" I'm like, "Well, if there was a sign there, I could easily point to it and tell you, well, the sign's out here," you know? So I feel like we just need a lot more of those. Kind of similar to, you know, the bathroom sign that says, "What belongs in our sewers?" That really cool cartoon. It's in every toilet in the district. Like, if we had something like that, that was for camping, a how-to-behave in camping, I think people would get it a lot easier than pamphlet. Because they read it when they're on the toilet, so it's a really good location.
Force to read it.
Yeah, they're forced to read it. And it's a funny, it's a really good campaign, that one. It's just, it's funny and it's engaging. And yeah, I think people would get it a lot easier than like with no education. Yeah, and to prevent the, moving the problem around, again, I think we need public spaces. And I would like to have some kind of written documentation or a move on council that will show, that shows that we are working with the vehicle residents of Squamish. And also like on safe locks, like just some kind of confirmation so that we feel safe. Like, if the bylaw is revisited, you know, like so that we're not automatically like just closed out. I mean, a perfect parking lot would be like the Adventure Centre parking lot. Like those guys from Mexico, that would have been a great place for them to go. Not for me, but for them. Because just like somewhere that's general, like the visitors can go, that can also add to their experience, that isn't similar to what Whistler provides. Or even, I don't know if you guys have been to Yosemite, but, I mean, I went to Yosemite twice, and I don't really have the inclination to go back. You would think, when you see, when you hear Yosemite, you would think, oh, you know, like wild, pristine. But you go to Yosemite, and it's like, it's rigid, it's rules, it doesn't feel very nice. It doesn't feel like you're in the outdoors, you feel like you're in a commercial venue. And I would hate for that, for Squamish to become like a commercial tourism-based venue because tourism is not environmentally friendly industry, and I think that needs to be recognised. I don't know, there's something about the wildness that I think we need to kind of preserve and to recognise that we have, that shouldn't get put away so quickly. I think that's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you. Go to Rufio.
All right. Rufio West. So Thomasina touched on BLM, for instance. Like, I travel a lot, sometimes I pay a small fee, like generally.
Sorry, can you just clarify the BLM act?
Sorry, Bureau of Land Management, that's the United States. And it's the equivalent to crown land, and a lot of times it's a lot closer to the urban municipalities. So it doesn't extend out like the district. So for instance, a lot of sites are down to $2 a night, or if they're $5 a night, you can stack them with multiple vehicles. And most BLM land is free. It does have its limitations, such as the Crown 14 Day Bowl. And like Thomasina touched on, Mamquon FSR, when you get to Powerhouse Springs Road, that's often a staging area for motorsport users. So one piece of feedback that I've been getting and that I've personally witnessed is that there's behaviours that go on, like poor bathroom practices, that often get attributed to people who are camping or in vehicles and staying in areas, that there are problem people in that group, absolutely. But they're also taking on the blame from other user groups. And so things like a bathroom will hopefully, if we can correct the behaviour, no matter who it is, that'll alleviate some of the blame game wherever it may lie. So that's, I guess, sort of separate from the bylaw. But I just wanted to recognise that there are multiple user groups that unfortunately get tied into this issue. And when we get into camping beyond sort of the Powerhouse Springs Road area at its current point, there are people in vehicles, yes. But there's a lot of people who are doing it in more recreationally from other user groups. A lot of the narrative has been about climbers in vehicles. And I just want to say, it does extend beyond that. And if we push climbers into those areas as well, that may, that may start mixing those groups a lot more. And one clarification I would actually like is, this is Schedule A here with all the shaded mapping polygons. But that piece about going enforcement autograph East Creek, what my understanding was, was that it's only going to apply here and that maybe that it was a miss, that it was accidentally an artifact from previous, is I correct?
The mention of Rafus?
Uh, yes.
These are the only crown parcels along the Mamquon Forest Service Road until that point. So it is actually true, but it doesn't go that, it doesn't go that far with the crown parcels.
Okay. Along Powerhouse Springs Road, I know there's a tiny bit of crown land that extends beyond this, but it's further back beyond private parcels. I would argue that those shouldn't be, like, those shouldn't be considered for any further extension because those are further out and those aren't close to residence as long as behavioural issues are addressed, such as fires and bathroom practices, things like that. As long as, one of the ideas that was brought to the table in getting towards a new version of the bylaw were different definitions of what was counted as camping, such as being in a tent, being in a self-contained vehicle, those kind of ideas. So it was trying to address the behaviour and, you know, just keeping that in mind with any sort of amendments that go forward. That there are crown parcels out there that hopefully can remain legitimate as long as they stay within certain boundaries of, I guess, behaviour and stuff. The last thing was, and back to optics, extending to show where the private parcels are may help with the optics for us as vehicle residents and those living in Valley Cliff who have negative impressions. They may, they're going to be upset the fact that it doesn't extend out. I've personally heard of people being upset about where the boundary is drawn currently. And that is because they think it should go further, which like it's been defined, there's private land, so it's not covered. But if they know that technically people in vehicles aren't allowed there because it's private, maybe they won't be as upset. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Robin?
Yeah, I could talk about a pile of stuff on this, but I'll try and keep it short. I don't know what's left. Right, okay, I'm Robin Sheridan. I'm a tenure holder and I'm trying to start a business out at Power Springs Road. It's a Canadian Eco Tour. We do feel that tourism can be done environmentally correct and can be a huge part of protection of green spaces and support of habitat enhancement and other great programs that come along with that. Our concern out there and with what's going on here is, has a lot to do with also our changing climate. We've seen in this area right now that our winds are drastically increasing. I think I've had like 10 years I've lived here. This has been one of the windiest months that I've experienced ever. On top of that, we've had one of our driest winters that I've experienced in this time year as well. I don't remember any good rainfall since maybe December. On top of that, we have an open area down Power Springs Road that I don't think is being properly addressed. And where the boundaries come and go and what's private is, private is very grey out there. And you guys say it's all private out there. That's actually not the case. I'm quite familiar with the boundaries and crown land tenure and subtenures, overlapping tenures, private land, First Nations land. It's a, it's a kerfuffle of properties out there. So that needs to be looked at in a little more detail. And if you are claiming that that's all private land, then I'll be sitting with some of the private land owners and we'll have to address that issue maybe a little more forcefully. And that might even be coming down to, do we close Power Springs Road down at night? I've gone out there and firsthand witnessed, we had a fire out there. Chief, when was it, two days ago?
On the weekend.
On the weekend, okay. So our wildfire department was up on Horseshoe Bay. So I don't think they were able to respond to that at the time, even if they were responding to the Horseshoe Bay Lions, Lions Gate one.
To the chair, provincial forestry was on scene.
They were on scene, okay. So the area, the area that is in discussions, everyone aware of that fire that happened out on Power Springs Road recently? Yeah, so that was, that was about 300 yards from our tenure. That was on First Nations, First Nations land forestry plot there. It was about 800 yards from our water supply for Squamish. It's about 700 yards from Atlantic Power Plant. And really close to the wildland interface of Valley Cliff houses out there. That fire could have easily gone way more aggressive than it was. There was a discussion whether that was human caused or not. There's umpteen amount, I mean, I could count over 20 fire pits along that road, up and down that area, in that back corridor. The actual burn itself was all around the fire that was there. We did a lightning check, there was no lightning in the area. I'm making a very detailed study of that through the wildland tracking system. So it's almost fully conclusive that it was human-based. We don't have the resources as private landowners to be patrolling that on a regular basis. I'm not a private landowner, I don't even, I'm trying to start a business out there. It'd be wild, but we show any sort of income to even support patrol, signage, gateage, that kind of thing. I'll be sitting down with Bob Das, Jeff Fisher, Squamish Nation, to see how we can address that if that's not something you guys are willing to address with us. But I think that's a major part. If you guys choose to just close off Mamquon Service Road, there's going to be a huge push for them all to go up there. And education is great, and I fully agree that there needs to be way more education on that road as to just a little sign in the corner that says, "High fire risk." There needs to be no fires because there is not fires allowed out there. You can't have a campfire. It is, you need it permanently to be in your backyard. And when there's a full fire ban, then there's no fires in the campgrounds in your backyard. That's how it works. There's absolutely no signage whatsoever. So how do we address that? Because some of these campers come in late at night, right? They come in from all over the place. So how is that even addressed? Because one of those fires, just one, right, wrecks everything back there. We got our water table, we got power plant, big taxpayers, we got businesses trying to start up, we got our forestry back there. It's a major issue, and I think that's drastically being ignored. That it just takes one incident of one camper that really has no idea that it's a dry season, really has no idea there's no fire ban back there, but goes back there and has a little campfire, and boom. We've got a major issue and limited resources. That fire alone, not a super easy place to get to for our local fire department by any means, and could have gone a different way. So I could talk a lot about different things. I'd like a little more clarity on then, as private landowners, what are our abilities out there? And we'll go take care of it in a cheap, sustainable way. And if that means maybe throwing a gate on Power Springs Road at night and making sure everyone's out of there, then maybe that's what we do. Because for us to go put signs and have a patrol out there, that's just not feasible whatsoever. I mean, that's, there is taxpayers out there. And if you can show me that it's all entirely private and you guys have no jurisdiction, I mean, you guys are using that road to go out and service your, the water supply for the district of Squamish. So I think there's a lot of grey there that isn't being said either.
Natasha?
Thanks for that. We would love to work with you on developing a solution that's works for everybody and in the short term too. I mean, we're well into fire season right now, as you indicated. In terms of the land tenure, it is complicated. Our GIS is sometimes wrong. And so it's showing the ownership of the various parcels along that road being various private landholders. But I appreciate it's complicated. So if you could help us unpack, you know, where the GIS is inconsistent with land tenure, that would be fantastic. And where about the complications of the road? That's a road that we use but don't maintain, so it's not.
We do actually sometimes.
Right, and so it's, so whether or not we have, it's a municipal roadway, it's a little bit grey. So a lot's to unpack there, and we'd love to work with you on that.
Sure. I'd love to set up something super familiar because for me and for a lot of other proponents out there, and I think for the district, it should be a bit of a pressing issue. Fires are things that make a major, major difference in our town. And whether there's camping or not camping, whether we have a water supply, whether businesses can run, whether the houses in the interface section are affected. So let's please consider the drastic change in our climate right now and how many dry summers we've had in a row, and the increasing winds. And then we have multiple people going out there. I went out there the other night, and right after that fire happened, I went out and turned two people, talked to two people that were driven right into the same spot and one was starting a fire. Exact same spot, two different people right after that. And I wasn't counting all the other ones that were parked along the road, underneath the power lines, which I'm pretty sure is a tenure on the ground line.
Counsel, any?
I had a quick point. I think somebody has been saying this, we're trying really hard to do what we can under our, and as balanced as we can under our jurisdiction. And we really, earlier we were talking about some of these plastics, and a big element of that discussion was some letters to the province about ways that they can help. And I think this is something that we really need to help from, more help from the province on as far as having campgrounds to go to and having that expansion of these areas, whether it's, you know, we've got the cat-laid facility, which is great, but doesn't accommodate so all kind of walk-in areas. But there's a big, it's a big parking lot there that is used for the camping. So maybe there's some expansion that we can, that can be done above that or to expand that. That's outside the district, just from, we need help from the province in all sorts of areas. And your Bureau of Land Management is great, that's a federal piece. Like, you know, like this, I'm sure there's great solutions happening in the towns and the municipal level in the other places that have been mentioned as in the discussion. But, you know, whether it's the state of Oregon or the, or other orders of government support with this. Because it's, it's hard to accomplish all the goals that we all have just with our levers and control. So maybe that's something that for us to discuss with the council and what we're specifically asking for, from who. But I think that there's some of this discussion needs to move to continue on at that level. To the piece on the Power, Powerhouse Springs Road, the GIS does show a piece of crown to the, to the west, sort of big chunk partly down, which I think is mostly cliff-ban, and I don't think you get so much bullets in that spot. But before next reading, if there's, if there's anything there that we've missed, I personally, I don't know how the rest of the council feels, would like to see that included just so we cover our bases. So if the landowners out there start being proactive, we haven't left a hole in the regulations. Yeah, but I think my main point for what council makes is some ongoing efforts to sort of help with these really tourism infrastructure pieces in this context. And then we have, and then of course we have the investment component as well, which is stuff I think that we can do a lot of work on as a district. But this tourism piece is so, is so big that I think we really need some help with that. So that's more comment than question, I suppose, for anybody, except for the crown land pieces out on Powerhouse Springs.
Yes, I'm just wondering if we should take a straw poll for, just while on that topic, how does council feel about having staff include that for consideration when it's brought back? Support? Your support?
Yes, sir.
So it sounds like, now are you, is staff clear on where exactly we're talking about? Because I'm not 100% clear myself.
So, yeah.
Okay. Okay. Counselor Anderson?
Yes, I was just going to offer support to Counselor Cooper's suggestion. And just come back to a recommendation to staff that the Squamish Estuary Management Committee and the Community Forest Board of Directors and Management Team are very important as complementary tools, management resources, and mechanisms for stakeholder engagement. The Squamish Estuary Management Committee, or the WMA, draws in the province. The Community Forest Agreement draws in Squamish Nation. And as I look at a map that's been offered to us by one of our correspondents, Toby Ford Kelsey, and I see what we were just talking about, the Powerhouse Springs Road, we've got the Squamish Nation private land surrounded on four sides by crown land. And the suggestion from this correspondent is that we include each one of those parcels. What I'd like to suggest is that we really must be sure that we bring in the Squamish Nation in consultation on this matter and perhaps to review the straw poll decision. and perhaps to review the straw poll decision that we've just made, to expand it or not, or, but certainly that much. I'd also like to suggest, for both of these entities, we don't make the decision as to who they include. This community forest is, that's not us. Forestry Management Plan, that's not us either. We can offer our input that they should look at their stakeholders in a new, to consider our campers and our camping community. We've had some really good suggestions here and some interesting information. And the Squamish Forestry Management Committee, for example, just not so long ago, it included agriculture. And it still includes the Rodden Gun Club representing fish and game folks, and that's really part of an earlier era. But we need to advance our, our work on identifying stakeholders and this now, I think, for both of these areas, our community forest, the entirety of our community forest and wildlife management area, we really need to draw in our camping community and our recreationalists as, as stakeholders in a more formal way. Or recommend that these two bodies do so.
Counselor Stone?
Yeah, so I think that, or at the end of June, and I think remembering the, the motivation behind this bylaw is that we do need an enforcement tool for this season to try and move along some of those campers that are causing law problems or causing problems. And so, recognize and just bring us back to why we're here, and I think that's important to remember. I do think that this is not quite 100% fair. I think the conversation today has shown that there's ongoing conversations needed. One piece that I picked up is, it's still unclearly, and it's either through education, I don't think necessarily through the bylaw, but messaging that camping on municipal roadways is still not allowed. That to me doesn't come out in what it is that we're seeing, and so I do have concerns that we risk moving people onto, onto roadways. And then I do think that identifying the private lands on the north end of the Mount Forest Service Road would be helpful as well for that map. And I think I hear that around, around the table. One piece that I also am really encouraged to hear, that there's ongoing conversation with regards to pursuing options of low cost or, or free camping spaces with the Vehicle Resident Association. And, sorry, your name?
Kevin.
Kevin proposed, I think, perhaps a sensitive area to put forward, the north end of the Wildlife, Wildlife for the Squamish Estuary. But I do think that should be included in future conversations. What I'm curious about is, has there been any current conversations around, there's two areas that have come to mind, the Smoke Plus parking lot and using that as an overnight free, there's a toilet there, there's garbage collection there. So curious if that's been thought of as like an immediate potential solution to trial through the summer? As well as the north end of the Adventure Center parking lot, I know that it's used as a, as a carpool spot for a lot of folks, but, sorry, the south end of the Adventure Center parking lot. It isn't commonly full with cars when they go there in the middle of the day. Is there something that we could put in? It's like, you can't park here from 7:00 AM to 8:00 AM, and so it forces people to move along in the morning. It narrows the time in which our bylaw enforcement and officers need to do that to move people along, but it still gives people an option to go somewhere to go.
Yep, great points. Thank you. The, I, I agree, this Smoke Plus lot and the Adventure Center lot, as well as the Brendan Park parking lot, these are all ideas that have been talked about in early discussions. We do need to think through the implications and the administration of this program. It's not, it would be a, it's not like, total bureaucrat here, but it's, it's not the kind of thing we would want to jump into without thinking it through. So we want to have a very good dialogue. We also are aware that there's resourcing implications, so we would have to put more to budget for next year or defer some activities from this year and redesign resources.
I'd just add to that to Robert Arfitch, General Manager, Corporate Services. So the one thing to remember about the Adventure Center parking lot is it's actually not as wide open as it looks in the south end is, there's a lease to the Forestry Center Society, so that's not actually available for general parking.
Thank you. Counselor Harper?
Thank you. I, thank you. I got really excited last time and I forgot to look down at my notes, and I did have a couple of quick, quick questions. In the budget portion, you said that the sign, it says that the signs, required signage will come from existing resources. But do you have a, have you projected out what, what that is and what that looks like? There are lots of talk about education and signage, it seems to be a great way to do that. Sign seem to cost more than everyone thinks all the time, so I'm curious to see how. I've noticed in my experience with signage, so I was curious if you had any numbers or ideas about that?
Now that the applicable areas are much smaller than the previous version, we feel much more confident that the signage resources will be adequate. The issue, more than the cost, it's the people to do it. So getting it in the work plan, Bob Smith, our Director of Public Works and Operations, has sort of protected a little bit of people time for this, pending council feedback, so we think it'll be okay, but certainly it's a question.
Thank you. And then are there any improvements for the pit site? Has the pit site been abandoned in this, this scenario? I just didn't see much for that in the budget, and last I heard there was some, some issues there and maybe some facilities that we could put in there. Anything?
Yeah, so I think you, that it's, it's certainly not been abandoned because the applicable area of the bylaw ends before the pit site. By extension, the pit site is available for people to camp. But since we know that that is a good spot, but it has a bit of leveling work to do, we need to resume, pending feedback, we need to resume conversations with Flynn Row and the Access Society and figure out how that work gets done. By all accounts, it's not a ton of work, but it does need to be done to optimize capacity.
Yeah, and I acknowledge that it's not a, a perfect spot for, for everybody, but there's a percentage of people that can go there and they can have a good place for X percentage to go on. And then just, as we heard, some great points about having some washroom facilities somewhere, whether we decide to, yeah, like in an area where people are like trailheads and that's where they keep on loading for their vehicle to go off on their adventure, whatever that is. In your, what is it, what is the cost roughly annually for, for a house somewhere? Do we have a, do we have a rough number for that? I know that the accessibility of servicing that is different if it's out of the pit site than a remote site, but do we have a rough number for that?
We do, and it's actually not as big of a deal as we thought. For two toilets to service out of that bar is about 300 bucks a month. Is that right? 360, something like that?
Yeah, it depends.
A month. A month. And so we, we certainly, it wouldn't be a year-round thing, I, I wouldn't imagine, just for two. So, yeah, it is, it's a cost, but not an enormous cost.
Just want to check, you mentioned, you know, we're talking about smaller areas now, so therefore the signage costs will be smaller. But I guess in my mind, whether we designate new spots, is camping allowed or camping not, it's just going to change what kind of sign. I assume one way or another you're going to need a sign, since you can't camp here, here you go, or you can camp here and here's the rules for camping here. So would we really see a, a change in sign cost one way or the other?
Well, if we're contemplating putting signs up in the rest of the municipality that say you can camp here, then that would be a different choice that would have a budget implication that we'd have to plan for that. I think we need to think through, it's great points Tom's areas about wanting to remind people what they need to be doing if they're camping. So maybe in areas that we know camping exists and we want to remind, yeah, they are allowed to be there, we have to remind people about good practices, we'd have to scope that out above costs that it's not currently in the plan.
So, one more question.
Yes, one more question. I'm excited about the app, Tourism Squamish app. Is that an opt, is that an opt in for members of Tourism Squamish to just catch all the stuff from the, the official sites and just whoever? Or what's, what that is that actually comes from?
So basically Tourism Squamish is kind of making sure that it works, but campground operators can provide, proactively provide information. They can update it, they, they get their own login, they can update it themselves every 15 minutes if they want to. And then basically Tourism Squamish will, will proactively kind of get the information from them like once a day if they're not, if they're not providing the information. So yeah, all the, the provincial sites, every, all of them are, and then whenever it's updated in anybody's login, it, it goes to everywhere that it's, you know, anybody can take it from the tourism website, put it on their own websites, climbing websites, any other, it's very, very open and very user friendly. So it's just, it's just started operating, but, so as far as, you know, uptake and everything, I'm sure we can get some feedback from Tourism Squamish. But yeah, I'm encouraged to see how it works.
I'm just concerned, I'm, I'm excited about, I'm a little hesitant about the, the information being, being up to date. Earlier today, we were from Constellation Festival, where there's this theme flock at a certain crunch time and when people park their vehicle, or they had a long day of adventuring and, or long drive to get here, or whatever, whatever it may be, and hey, we'd like you to go somewhere, and this is one of the places people go. When they get there, if there's a place and it works, and that's good, and just move them to somewhere where they don't have that success, I'm, I'm leery of meeting up to work.
Through the Chair. So actually, I just, being off the top of my seat, Ms. Weeks in the audience, would you like to?
Chair.
Chair, come to the table, please.
Leslie Weeks, I'm the Executive Director of Tourism Squamish. Yes, we've had some great success so far with the app. It's not an opt-in thing. Every campground in Squamish, so provincial and private are on the, on the site. We haven't had much success with our operators updating it, so we've been doing it twice a day right now. So we're doing a call around in the morning and then a call around again later in the afternoon. And if it's getting close, we do that anyway. So we're running the visitor center, we have to be, we have to know what's available. So for us, just love, you know, go online, quickly update something, it's easy, they have the information. So we're open seven days a week, so, you know, we're consistently doing it. We haven't had much of a, you know, they're not doing it themselves, the operators. So we were doing it ourselves, and it's, yeah, it's easy, it's great, it's, and we've just started, so, you know, we'll see how we go. But if, if people are getting to a limited number of sites and we're putting a limited availability, if they've got lots of inventory, then, then, you know, we'll say there's lots of inventory available. And if they're full, which typically Alice Lake and Fort Soar, but, you know, Mount Carmouche's got space, and Mountain Vine often has space. So there's, there's, there's other campgrounds that do have, have space for people.
We, we, in this role, we're always looking at the, the boundary, District Squamish, Tourism Squamish, kind of bigger, such as a bigger area. So it's including the, the upper Squamish.
They're part of it as well, yes. It's that we've got Paradise and Squamish, the campground on Squamish Valley is part of it as well. Like, I mean, there's arbitrary boundaries in terms of, we basically, for Tourism Squamish, consider a tenure right through upper Squamish and Paradise Valley. That's part of our area in terms of promotion.
Just, yeah, one, one point to add to that. When I called around and spoke to all the operators, I made sure to ask the question of what happens when someone shows up at just after dark and your campground is completely full, and they all have their own solutions to that. They have some area that they can, where they can direct people to so that they're not turning people away, even when they're, when they're at all their reservable spots are full. There is a bit of an overload capacity. So I have a resolution that I'm about to vote, just before I do, staff, is there any? Would you recommend something different or in particular, or are you comfortable? Basically, I am going to propose a resolution on the agenda with caveat that what comes back includes some of the discussion today. Ms. Landon?
And specifically removing 1.2 that's in the draft bylaw.
Oh, you want that specifically? So I will move then, that the committee of the whole recommend that District Squamish Camping bylaw number 2679, 2019 be forwarded to council for consideration of second and third reading as amended and inclusive of the comments made at committee of the whole meeting and with removal of item two?
1.2.
Item 1.2. I will move that. Is there a second reading? Counselor French, any discussion?
Just one clarification on what that, that one point you have as a part of.
Yes.
I'll get my list.
Sure. I think Counselor Stone's point earlier, just getting us back to what this is here for and the tool that staff is asking us to put in place is really important at this point. And for that alone, I think I'm supportive of what we're seeing in the second reading. And I acknowledge as well, the good work that has gone into this issue since we talked about it a few weeks ago at first reading, the cooperative discussion, the dialogue, it's all clearly been helpful to get us to a point where we're not overflowing with the feedback. Because what that says to me, that voices were heard, people felt like they were listened to, and it's being incorporated into what we're seeing now. Ask more.
Thank you. I'm, I'm supportive of this, of this direction we're going here. I think, I think there's still lots of work to do on other, on other pieces of the, of the equation with this. And, and I, I think that's a huge plus that came out from our work already on this, is, is really a more wholesome understanding of some of those, some of those pieces. So, yeah, it's a, it's a hot, dry summer already, and, and we do need some regulation, and I think that this is, we need it soon. So we'll have to support this and look forward to seeing what shape it takes as it, as we see.
Counselor Stone?
I will be supporting this, but very tentatively, knowing that it is not the perfect solution. It is a tool to get us through this year and for us to learn from. I think we've already seen the community engaged at a very high level on this topic, and I don't think we have it quite right. I think we still need to find places for people to go. I think just presenting exclusion zones doesn't, doesn't solve the issue. It gives us an enforcement tool for our current season, but it doesn't actually provide solutions, which I think is what our community is asking for. So I look forward to continuing the dialogue and learning from the summer's experience. I do want to reiterate the importance of the education and messaging components. And there was some discussion around, around signage and the signage budget, and I think it's challenging to know where to put that signage of how to camp properly when there aren't places where we're really allowing people to camp. And so I do think that through the summer season, we'll just have to get creative in terms of social media and working for Tourism Squamish and other apps. These are the, these are the best practices if you are going to wild camp. And definitely heading home on the wild, the, the no campfire, wildfire risk is a key component of that. So again, I will support it tentatively, knowing that we are moving into this from a learning perspective and an iterative approach.
I'll not have much to add, but to make the observation that the largest, most devastating forest fire in the last 100 years in this region happened from Rin Creek, swept across the valley and up the other side to the mouth of the Squamish. And you can see it in old photographs, it was huge. A lot of people remember it, remember describing the winds of, of that episode. And it, and so that was quite an event, and just less than 100 years ago, but well described. I myself have had three major forest fires behind my house during my lifetime on Hospital Hill. And so I think as we move forward, there's a short term and a critical piece to this, and that is to make sure that we're covered in doing the best we can to avoid forest fires.
And I will be supporting this as well. I, I agree with a number of my colleagues that we're not at the solution we need to be at, but I feel like this is a worthwhile step forward. Being acting mayor for a couple of dry months now, wildfires is at the top of my things that, that keep me up at night. So, you know, I do wonder if we're going quite far enough. But I'm pleased, especially with some of the discussion today, and I'd like to hope to see that incorporated, that we can address some of these things. And just a, a side note, last week, we did have a proposal for rezoning of a property that is owned for camping right now, and they would like to do something else with that.
And they would like to do something else with that. So I think that is something, you know, as part of this whole discussion, that council and the public is, is being mindful of and considering how we move forward. I think, you know, it's not just this camping by law, there's many pieces of, as a number of evidence applied to this. So with that said, I will be supporting this and looking forward to seeing all the commentary being incorporated when this comes back to us. So I will call a question. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Motion carries. And with that, I will recess for lunch. Thank you everyone for coming out to speak and sharing. Welcome back everyone to the Committee of the Whole for June 25th, 2019. And we are now, we're in our Committee of the Whole meeting, and it's BC Transit 2019-2020 Operating Budget. Let's take it away.
Well, I'm Dora Gunn, Sustainability Coordinator with the District of Squamish. I'm going to pass the presentation over to two BC Transit staff who are with us today. We have Lisa Trotter, Senior Manager Government Relations, and Bronson Bullivant, Transit Planner.
Thank you so much for having us here today. Just going to pull up the slides in front of you there for our presentation. So some of the things we're going to go through today, as you, as was stated, is the annual operating agreement for BC Transit. We're going to do a little bit of a recap of the fall 2019 expansion plans. Go through our three-year expansion initiatives. This is the time of year where we go out to all of our communities and ask about future expansions so that we can mutually benefit from some budgeting and sign off on some MOUs. And then we're, and then we're looking for a couple of recommendations from council. So I'll start with the annual operating agreement. The annual operating agreement is a two-party agreement between BC Transit and the local government. And it confirms service levels, revenue projections, and the cost structure for your system. We have an overarching agreement, which is the Transit Service Agreement. We don't revisit that annually, but it does lay out the roles and responsibilities of both BC Transit and the municipality. There is a separate service provider operating agreement between BC Transit and the operating company. And that confirms the terms of service with the Cedar Sky as an entire region with our operating partner, PWD. The 2019-2020 AOA captures revenues forecast based on actual performance and some related fair assumptions. And the total costs reflect about a 3.6% primary inflationary increase this year to the annual operating agreement. So you'll see in front of you now the annual operating agreement budget schedule. And it shows at the top the conventional level service, total revenue projections, total operating costs. Total costs with the local government share of lease fees included, and the net local share of costs. It also has below it the cost for your custom service, which is separated out. So those two, like I said, primarily it's about a 3% inflationary increase. And the annual operating budget is done annually because it reflects a change in service hours from the year before. And any additional cost that we need to put that service on the road are included in the annual operating agreement.
Thanks, Lisa. Okay, so for this coming September, we have an expansion of approximately 1,400 hours. With those hours, we're primarily looking to improve the core transit network during off-peak periods. Just so everyone understands what off-peak means, off-peak is essentially the time that is not during rush hour. So that does not include 7:00 AM to 9:00 AM roughly, and roughly 3:00 PM to 6:00 PM. All of the routes above are included in that. We have improvements to the Routes 1, Route 2, 3, 4, and 9. The changes to Route 4, Garibaldi, we're revoting it to service Walmart and the surrounding business park. And the Route 9, we're adding evening service. For the Routes 1 and 2 and 3, we're looking to fill in some gaps of service that we currently are seeing with those little red circles. It's kind of hard to see unfortunately, but we're filling those in. We're also looking to reduce or remove all Routes 1 and 2 combined trips during weekday, and looking to remove some of them on the weekends. So the expansion initiatives agreement, the expansion MOU highlights expansion identified for your transit system along with high-level annual costings based on the hourly rates of your system. Upon confirmation of intent from the District of Squamish to commit to expansion of budget, BC Transit will proceed with request to secure funding from the province. The cost of the transit expansion MOU also reflects costs to lease additional space to the fleet for the buses as the current facility is at capacity. So for the planned September 2020 expansion, we're looking, we're asking for 1,500 hours of service primarily to be utilized to fill in the gap to Route 5, South Parks. Currently, there's a gap in the morning and a gap in the afternoon. We would also look to improve on-ten performance as well as improve the core transit network or the CTN during the school year. And we'll work with city staff to accomplish this. Following to present this to you, we will be putting together a service change plan to outline exactly what we'll be changing to make those improvements.
So this is the Expansion Memorandum of Understanding. And for the public's knowledge, BC Transit works on a three-year revolving expansion program. So every year annually, we come to all the municipalities and ask what they'd like for expansion dollars so we can put requests into the province. And it's important to note that in year one, once the Memorandum of Understanding is signed off on, those hours and buses become locked in. So we anticipate that the municipality would budget for them. And, and then the province will put it into their budget, and we get confirmation of the provincial budget when it comes down in February. Year two and three are part of that rotating budget schedule for the Memorandum of Understanding. So we like to put forward a service plan to the province that includes three years so that they can budget accurately what they think the needs will be throughout the province. But we do revisit those annually. So today, we would ask that you would sign this Memorandum of Understanding, knowing that year one would be locked in. And if you decided upon those buses and those hours, that would be a decision that would need to, need to be made. And year two and three, we have an idea of what, what we think would be recommended so that you can see the costing to budget, and so the province can. But we'll revisit it and fine tune it next year. Now, on this, you'll see it says 1,500 hours for year one. That's for conventional service, as Bronson described, to fill in the peak service gaps, the five South Parks. And to do some improvements to the core transit network, or CTN. We also have 850 hours of service expansion for custom handy-dart service. And this is to improve service to custom handy-dart service, which is for eligible users that have cognitive or physical disabilities. And that's to improve the service so that they can have evening or weekend service, which currently isn't available. And we would certainly do some more public outreach to determine whether it would be, what would be most needed, the evening or weekend service before putting that service in in September of 1920. Then the subsequent years, we have 3,000 hours and two buses to improve the core transit network, subject to the priorities coming out of the Transit Future Action Plan. And then year three, suggested 1,500 hours for anything that comes out of the Transit Future Action Plan, including perhaps service to Loggers Lane or the Squamish Adventure Center. And like I said, we could revisit those in more detail in upcoming years. Now, when we first sent out this MOU to staff, we had some discussion back and forth about the two bus vehicle requirement for the 1,500 hours. We have at BC Transit a fleet team that evaluates how many vehicles are needed. And what we incorporate into that plan is also how many spare ratio vehicles are needed. And that's because we may have six vehicles on the road during peak service, but there's always the chance one's going to be in the shop for repairs or for scheduled maintenance. And we want to make sure you have enough spare buses to cover those out of service buses. So they have a calculation that they use that includes kilometers on the buses, that looks to the service on the buses. And with the original MOU, we determined it was two buses. In further discussion with staff, we recognized it was on the threshold and that we could probably defer it. And I just sent a new MOU out to Dora, apologies to council. There wasn't a chance to incorporate this until the last minute that we reflected 1,500 hours and one bus was actually a possibility. That with the spare ratio, we could probably defer that other bus till year two. So the MOU that we're looking to endorse today would be the one that has September 1920, 1,500 hours, and one bus. And a reminder to the public, the buses are owned by BC Transit, and they are leased out to municipalities across the province. So the one bus reflects a lease fee that if signed up, signed off on, would be responsibility of the District of Squamish when it goes into service.
Just before we go on, can I clarify, these numbers are cumulative, so the 2022, 2023, that's not one new bus compared to today. That's actually five new buses compared to today, and same for all the numbers.
That is correct. So, yes, so one, one new bus for, for next year. And then it would be three buses for the year after, and then one bus the year after that. And again, the first year is the important one, as we lock that in and we actually order the bus. Those other buses won't get ordered till next year, we'll have another opportunity to look at year two and year three. So they should be looked at for budgeting purposes. You have a cost, and then the province will have a cost to kind of look towards in the next couple of years. Sure.
Can you explain the difference between the one bus at 177,000 and the two buses at 276,000? It seems there's, as far as the comp.
Yeah, there's, there's.
It's not, it's not as simple as the cost three times, so it's just three buses.
I can add a little bit of background information. So it isn't just getting the buses, it's also getting the facilities that would be required to host the buses, and also mechanics on staff to be able to deal with the buses. So there's, it's not just the lease fees of the buses, there's other pieces included. What those pieces are, I can't tell you exactly which ones, but.
No, that's okay. I just wanted to make sure that I was.
Totally.
Kind of, that's pretty much it. Thank you.
So from a budget perspective, we had anticipated the costs in the annual operating agreement. So these are already included in the 2019 budget. This annual operating agreement is just for the base costs, so it doesn't include the 2019 expansion that's happening. So there'll be an AOA amendment that will be coming to council in the fall that has that expansion in it. And those costs were also anticipated in the 2019 budget. For the three-year expansion MOU, I'm going to say something slightly different than what Lisa said. So this MOU pretty much locks us in for the year one buses. However, the final approval for the service hours happens through the budget process. So ideally, we stay the course that we're signing on with this MOU. But if council was to, at budget time, decide, oh, you know, we can't do this for some reason, it would be possible to backtrack on service hours, not so much on the buses, for year one. As Lisa mentioned, the MOU is reviewed annually, so years two and three are flexible still. And one final note is that all the costs will be added into the five-year financial plan.
So just so I can clarify, if, if we've made a sort of a last-minute change from two down to one bus, does that mean we'll have a surplus in the 2019 budget, or how does that?
And by last-minute change, do you mean now or at budget time?
I guess I'm trying to sort that out.
Okay.
Because we're talking about the 20, what's in 2019 budget, and some of this is already covered, and.
So the, the annual operating agreement refers to the 2019 budget. These expansion MOUs refer to future budgets, so it's not the 2019 budget. So the decision about whether you wanted one bus or two would ideally be made now. Though, but it would be reflected in the 2020 and future budgets.
Counselor Stoner?
Maybe I'll hold my question till the end of the presentation. You might address it.
We're, we're almost at it. Yeah. So I've just put the recommendations up on the slide here, and I've slightly changed the wording from the council report just to add in the amended Memorandum of Understanding.
Counselor Stoner?
So one of the biggest constraints, from what I understand, of adding a new bus is having somewhere to put it, in the actual service station, space. So my apprehension comes from, I think we are close to having a solution there. But if we commit to having one, potentially two buses in 2020, and that solution doesn't come through, then we're still on the hook for that lease fee, correct?
Yes, I could speak to that, actually. We recognize that your facility, councilor, is currently at capacity. But we have an agreement with our operating company to lease space. And they have assured us that there is enough space for them to lease per vehicle as vehicles come on for the next several years until a facility is ready. And if a facility comes online sooner, we only pay for what we're actually leasing. And it's a short-term lease arrangement that would terminate when we needed it to. So it shouldn't be impactful here. But those costs are included in the MOU for them, for each of the buses.
Counselor? Counselor Anderson?
During our last meeting together, one of the items, in matters of, that were discussed was tracking ridership. And as I understood it, new technology that would enable very precise monitoring and tracking, per route, per bus, if you like. My question is, how is that monitoring, which presumably is equipment to be purchased, is that a part of the agreements we're looking at today?
Through the chair, thank you, counselor. That, that would be a part of the annual operating agreement in the IT and technology costs that are incorporated. That equipment has been placed on the buses, and we have now exited test mode with that equipment, and we are getting that data. So when you see upcoming presentations on our, our service delivery, we'll be able to show you those metrics of what the ridership is doing on routes so that we can use evidence-based decision-making to help aid this council in decisions around future service expansions.
Thank you. So that, that is in the IT component of this disagreement.
That is.
Follow-up question.
When we discussed route expansions last time, and in particular Route 3 was developed at one, there's a new housing subdivision in the works there. And we were probably looking at a few years before there would be on a transit route, or we could start thinking that way. So I see on, in the staff report, that BC Transit is expecting to update the Transit Future Plan in 2020. My question is whether that would be the opportunity to discuss new route scenarios to cover Hospital Hill and Valley Cliff because it appears that that would be necessary to address that subdivision and to bring in new opportunities there.
Thank you. Yeah, that is, you're exactly right. We are planning to update the Cedar Sky Transit Future Plan with the Transit Future Action Plan. But with that, and coming into spring of 2020, we'll be evaluating essentially all potential route options, service level changes, expansion to new areas throughout the Cedar Sky region, including Squamish. So that would be when that item would be tackled.
Spring 2020 is what you're.
Our projected start time of the project, which would include public engagement, and which would include evaluating all of the ridership data as well. And other plans that are ongoing in Squamish.
Counselor French?
Thanks. So regarding the service change plan, when that planning takes place, is there an automatic default to take school opening time and closing time into account in coming up schedules?
Yes. So during that plan, we would evaluate through, with communication with the local government partner, as well as the schools in Squamish, to decide when and where we would move times to fit the bell times. That, that, we would aim to approach it for the following year when, so for example, the service change plan, we'll be working on it to have it complete by the end of this year, completion around February, to present to council in March. And those times would be associated with projections from the school districts for the following year. Does that make sense?
In, yes, makes sense. Do, are, are all schools treated equally, or do secondary schools get slightly higher priority for ensuring synchronization?
That's a good question. Dora?
Through the chair. We try to treat all schools equally. Yeah, there's no particular priority. And there's interesting scheduling challenges that we sometimes have to work around, so it's not perfect, but we're getting closer.
And that includes both the private and the public schools?
That's right, we're trying.
Counselor Cooper?
Okay, I have a couple. Just one, because it was raised to me by a member of the public, that as part of all of this, we are doing away with transfers, but we have a one-day pass, which is essentially the equivalent of two one-way trips. But you can use it unlimited throughout the day, so for most people should end up the same or cheaper than when those transfers were before. Does that make sense?
That's true. Yes, that was the day pass onboard decision that was made through the fair review.
Now, just in terms of the route, you know, I know it comes before council, but before that, is that strictly a discussion between staff and BC Transit? Or for example, as mentioned, you know, there's going to be a new stop, one of the routes is going to go by Walmart. Would Walmart approach BC Transit, or would they always come through the district? And how do we sort of put these things on pipeline?
Generally, through the chair, or sorry, counselor, generally, all bus stop changes are, they do come through BC Transit generally from the district. I haven't ever had outreach from members of the community or businesses. And it's a decision of the District of Squamish where bus stops should be located.
I can add to that particular one. So we have had fairly low ridership on the Route 4. So we've been looking at opportunities to try to increase that ridership, which is why we decided to add in that Walmart deviation. That actually was a recommendation. That actually was a recommendation from the bus drivers themselves.
My final thing, and I know, I think it was the last time we had a bit of a discussion around e-buses and where those are. And, you know, having driven, recently driving an electric vehicle, seeing the maintenance costs go down. And I understand the purchase price may be higher. But, you know, thinking about the ratios and the impact on costs, what is the most effective way for us to ask BC Transit to make e-buses an option? I understand you're doing some research and so on. But is there a best way that we can sort of say, hey, we would like this? Do you like at least be able to consider this?
Thank you, Counselor. I think a lot of communities share your concerns. And certainly, we have heard loudly at BC Transit that that should be an initiative that we move forward. And we've heard that from the province as well. We have made a commitment to no longer order heavy-duty diesel buses. We are looking at CNG as an interim solution as we move towards electric. There are still things with the electric fleet that need to be worked out. They're not available in every size. They require infrastructure investments. They require a lot of BC Hydro energy. So we have to have agreements with BC Hydro in place to make sure that we have a rate that works and enough power in the power grid to house them. So it will be a slower transition, but we absolutely want to transition towards electric. And we're looking at CNG to bridge the gap between the technologies. And in some vehicle sizes, there's just not the ability to either switch to CNG or electric at this time. So I think you have been heard, but certainly in forms like this, we do hear that and take that back to BC Transit and back to the province.
Counselor Stone?
I was excited to hear that the suggestion of the Walmart trucking stop came from the bus drivers themselves. That was one of my questions. And I know that this is a tripart agreement, and you guys tend to have the direct relationship with the operators. And so just curious where they fit into the process of identifying kind of efficiency in routes.
Thank you, Counselor. We reach out to the operating company often. We have an operations division as part of our shared services model that works exclusively with the operating partners across BC. So whenever we're doing a service change, whether we have a working group meeting that includes District of Squamish staff or whether it's just phone calls and conference calls between Bronson and I and the operating company, we always include them in our public engagement. And we always include them in service changes to get their input. It's valuable. They're the ones that are on the road talking to our customers. So it's important.
Just to add on to that, at all communities, they're provided with these cards that they include information on and they get back to us. So I know a lot of other communities that work, including CAMVPS. They host and house all of these common cards. And we work with them exclusively to kind of gather those, the main themes, and then back to us. So it is really, really useful, especially when we're planning expansions.
And then just another question. If you can go up to the table with the proposed expansion initiatives. Dara was kind enough to put in last year's version of this from 2018, which states that for 2020, 2021, we were looking at one vehicle with annual hours of $2,500 at a cost of just over $177,000. And up here, we have one vehicle, a cost of $177,000, but 1,000 less annual hours. So I'm curious why we don't have as many annual hours we did projected last year. Does that make sense?
I can do the best.
We all have hours, but we're still paying the same amount of money.
Yeah, so essentially, this is a revolving plan. So every three years, we project what it's going to cost. And a lot of that actually comes through our finance division. There's other costs included that we don't necessarily foresee. For example, I know what Squamish for this year was, understood that previously they wouldn't need a mechanic, but then they would need a mechanic. So that changed. That changes the cost. Other costs include the lease space that wasn't assumed before as these, the years two and three are just kind of what we believe in terms of projection without actually nailing it down. So it's high-level estimates that aren't always necessarily fully accurate.
And now we can use the space, so we have a...
And we project high, so we can definitely include what we want to get done. Because those numbers are sent to the province, so they know that we want to expand. And it gives us the option to. The cost, again, it's the financial department's decision exactly where that lands, but...
And it's a high-level estimate. So when we sign these MOUs, we say in the MOU it's a high-level estimate. Then the cost is reflected in a more holistic manner in the three-year budget that comes out in the November timeframe. And then that forms the final AOA. So it is a little bit of a high-level estimate. And as we know more, we nail down years two and three a little more accurately.
And one quick follow-up on that. So last year's three-year expansion MOU, as it was in that report, do you remember council voted on that as it was? And so then was it included in our five-year financial plan, those numbers?
Council did vote on it, to the chair. Council did vote on it how it was. We did not include it in the five-year financial plan with the exception of the initial expansion. So you get the initial expansion in September. It's then annualized the following year. So that portion was, other ones were not. This time around, we will do that.
Thank you.
Counselor, further. Does someone want to move the... Counselor French? One more second. Counselor Anderson? Any discussion?
I will just add, you know, I'm happy to support this. I would say, you know, and realizing that I'm now part of government, so I'm part of this, but the pace of bureaucracy versus the pace of technology and so on, I would like to see EV options. I'm not sure that a CNG option is, the timeframes actually work and given IPCC and what that says. I would love, just personally, speaking for myself, love to see the EV options directly. But with that, I will call a question. All those in favor? And opposed? No, motion carries. Thank you.
Oh, there's two?
Yep.
Sorry. Oh, okay. Someone like to move the...
I'll just move the first one.
Yeah.
I will move the second one.
Okay, Counselor Stone or Counselor French? All those in favor? Opposed? No, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
If somebody can actually find it.
I'm here at the beginning of the minute. Or if you want to do the...
Thanks so much for coming in.
Thanks for having us. It's great to see you.
Okay, so let's take a five-minute recess, a little break, and get... All right, thank you. Welcome back, everyone. And we are on the real estate master plan. Mr. Plum, I think it's to you.
Thank you very much. I'll pop this in the driver's. Oh, they're all used up. I can just pull this out here.
Just yank it.
All right. So today, we're here to seeking council endorsement of the Real Estate and Facilities Master Plan. And before I begin, I'd just like to acknowledge that something that we identified in this phase of the project, which started with an earlier strategy, is the importance of acknowledging that district facilities are located on Squamish Nation traditional territory, both the ones we have now and the ones we contemplate in the future. And so there's sort of an overarching theme throughout that. What we're going to address upfront, that isn't in the individual sections of the report, but it's sort of on top of the whole report, is that it gives us a chance for our two governments to work together and to support the development of inclusive spaces in the community and to explore opportunities for our two groups to partner on sharing facilities and to consult on investments that could be of mutual interest. And further to that, we also just wanted to acknowledge that we will embed in our thinking going forward the importance of making sure our facilities are welcoming, safe, and inclusive to all members of the community, regardless of culture, race, gender, or age. So with that, just going to walk you, very quickly, the agenda. We're just going to start with a little bit of background. And then we'll get into the recommended whats and whens for facilities and land. And then recommended how, funding, a quick touch on the implementation, and a quick summary. And that will be it. So we've got about an hour, I'm told-ish. So what I'd like to do is sort of work through this by deck in each section and then take a break in each section and answer any questions that might come up. So they contain to that. And at that point, that way, hopefully, by going through the section, I may answer some questions that pop up. And if that's all right with council, we can proceed that way. So just going back a little bit, back to actually 2017, we acknowledge that many of our existing facilities were already in an end-of-life condition. Many of these facilities were quite old, and they required immediate and significant investments. We also had new facilities that we'd identified that we required for future growth. And we didn't have a long-term financial reserve built up for these investments. And no real policy or strategy as to how to make decisions in this environment. So we started off by doing what we're calling Phase 1, which was the Real Estate and Facility Strategy. And we completed that in the spring of 2018. Council adopted that strategy. And some of the key findings that we got through that work was, at that point, we had identified about a $100 million gap between what we needed for facility investments and what we had for funding identified. That strategy put together six strategies and 25 actions that were going to help us move forward in this environment to make decisions, to try and fill that gap. And then it put forward an implementation process. And the key part of the implementation process was in making sure that when we go forward and we're thinking about investing in facilities and land, that we're looking at it in the broader real estate perspective of our whole portfolio and that we're looking at it organization-wide in terms of all of our capital needs. And then within the context of the financial constraints of the organization. That strategy also identified six strategic principles. And I won't go over these in detail, but you've seen them in the earlier document. But it's important to know that these were very, very important in the development of the master plan. We utilized these extensively. You'll see them popping up in the report in many, many places. And so that, I just wanted to make note of that. So Phase 2 is where we are now, which is the master plan that we're working on or representing to council. And the strategy actually recommended completion of this master plan, similar to other asset management plans we have and master plans. And the goal of this master plan was to identify what facility and land investments we need for the future, when those may occur, and how those may be funded. Now, in terms of, that's kind of what the information part of it is. But in terms of what this master plan really delivers, and I've struggled with this word to figure out exactly what to call it because it's not a decision set. It's not a list of investments to follow. It's really actually a tool that we can use, the community and council, can use to support the many facility and land investment decisions that are going to be coming from the future. And it's a tool because, A, it provides context. So it provides us with a look and the information to see the bigger picture. It provides us with some approach, i.e. the strategic principles, how we may make some decisions, prioritize. And actually, there's some modeling included in here that illustrates the impacts of the decisions and how they may be impacted by the many, many changing conditions that can happen as this thing moves forward. So it is, it's a snapshot in time. It's based on the best information we have today. And that information can change tomorrow. And so it's built to change with the future as well. As Mr. Wickham says, progressive elaboration. He drilled that into my head many times along the way. And will be constantly updated as we go forward. So I'm just going to stop for a quick second there and see if anyone has any questions about that part so far.
I appreciated your opening comments regarding the Squamish Nation context to our lands, our facilities, and for this master plan. And you've also have this outlined on page three of the report where you refer to the significance of the Squamish Nation and as partner, as consultation partner. And I would add also that industrial lands and employment, economic development, they're partnering in numerous ways going ahead. We also have relationships with the province and with the federal government. The federal government is building downtown. Maybe they have plans. The province has all kinds of plans and interact with us. My question is, how will this master plan work as a tool for negotiations with any of those agencies? Would you conceivably pull this out and say, we've done this body of work? We'd like to show you X or... That's my question. Is it a tool for negotiation and also for applying for money?
Absolutely, through the economic area. I think what this really demonstrates is how big of a challenge this really is. And so as part of that, we need to partner with other entities and governments and other organizations. So I think it shows how important that partnership piece is on a whole bunch of fronts. And we're going to actually explore that a little bit further on in the presentation around when we get into the funding side of things and to really show how the other organizations and governments can come to participate here.
Counselor Stone?
Can you remind me what level of public engagement we had on the Real Estate and Facility Strategy?
The Real Estate Facility Strategy, we didn't do a significant amount of community engagement at that time. It was more just a sort of a setting up and identifying the universe as we speak. There's been some community engagement done since then around Brennan Park. And I'll touch base a little bit on what community engagements have been done since then.
When you say this is a context piece of the tool and so on, you know, it's got lots of assumptions and fairly high-level estimates. So as we move forward and we find out what things actually cost and maybe some of our actual decisions change things a little bit, how do we see updating this? Is this something that council would review and change and reapprove annually or every five years? Or do you have any sense of...
Sure. Yeah, I mean, we will be updating it constantly as circumstances change and as we make decisions. We will also be coming into council each time we, to make a decision and get funding authorized. So we will be providing updates each time we come into council. So when each decision is made, you'll have an understanding as to how it impacts things down the line. Okay. All right. So in terms of moving into the actual work, what we started out to do after the strategy was endorsed is we wanted to basically bring in some professional help to sort of ground truth and verify what we had done. The earlier work was done through the assistance of STAN Tech, but we didn't have architects. We didn't have cost consultants. So we brought in architects to help us understand the capacity and conditions on our existing facilities and to identify high-level space plans and also to do space plans for the new facilities. We also got updated cost estimates. And you're going to see these through the document as well. These are definitely more in-depth than the ones that we provided in the Real Estate Facility Strategy. They now include all cost components, design, site prep, building construction, and contingency allowances. And you're going to see ranges on the numbers as they come forward and that's to show contingency allowances. You know, this is, serves a couple purposes. You hear constantly that government projects run way over budget. We want to try and avoid that scenario. So we tried to be very conservative in these numbers, tried to keep everything in there. So, you know, some of the numbers actually look quite large when you look at them at first. But as again, they include pretty much everything in there. We also looked at the, we went back to Strategic Principle 2A, which is all about trying to minimize our facility investment. So we looked at a variety of ways to try and keep the investment numbers down and the impact on capital down. I won't give the list, but you can see them. But one of the ones I've also underlined is partnerships and leasing as possible ways to defer capital investments. And we did some community engagement as well. So we did the Brennan Park Expansion Plan in 2018. One of the community talked about that. We did some recent expressions of interest at Brennan Park to identify any potential facility partners who may want to come in and build facilities there. And we talked to other potential partners along the way, including other forms of government, other levels of government, and other third parties that might be of interest in coming to this project. So what we found with our existing facilities, and I'm just hitting on the highlights here going forward because there's a lot in here and it'd take me forever to go through all this. So I'm just going to kind of hit the keynotes here. because there's a lot in here and it'd take me forever to go through all this, so I'm just going to kind of hit the keynotes here. But what we learned through this work is that the Fire Hall Number Two, Public Works and Municipal Hall are all recommended for replacement by the architects that did the studies on them. They looked at renovating them to keep them going. And while we can put a significant amount of money in to address end-of-life and modernize these facilities, it doesn't address our capacity issues there. So you spend all this money to fix them up, but you still need more space. So, and that was really, really prominent on these three facilities. So I've got a table, a couple of tables here. I'm not going to walk you through each one, I just want you to, as they're up on the screen, look in the rationale section as well. It does explain why, and this is all laid out in the report as well. And there's nothing new in here that's not in the report. But, you know, this table sort of summarizes a lot of that report and includes the rationale on the far right side. I don't want to speak to each one individually per se. If there's ones that council wants to be addressed specifically, we can bring them up after I roll through these tables. But I would like to have Mr. Wickham just give us a quick overview in the Fire Hall, because there is, we are moving forward with a project on the Fire Hall that was announced a couple of weeks ago, the tender went out. So I would like, because that one is moving forward, it's the only one that really is right now, and advanced it is being adopted. But I wanted Mr. Wickham just to give you a quick update on that.
Thank you. Just really quickly to go over some of the history, I think council is well aware, but for the public who maybe don't drive past the Fire Hall of Tanalis, it's pretty obvious if you do that that building is in dire straits frankly. It's beyond end of life. We did have a seismic upgrade program for the building, which once we finished the design was essentially a replacement, one wall at a time, and didn't address many of the other issues with the building. So as we really dug into that building, we discovered that part of land it was on was not sufficient in size to have a safe entrance and egress of vehicles during a fire and many other issues around the decontamination room, for example, to prevent cancer of the firefighters. So that facility basically has to go and be replaced. What is relatively new is the idea that we would put that facility up in Valley Cliff. The main admin center where our career firefighters are and where most of our more complex apparatus is stored should go close to downtown, which is, has a lot of very large and complex buildings going in as we speak. And will soon have a much better access in a few years when we get Pemberton Bridge in directly from Valley Cliff. Up out of the floodplain, also on more seismically stable ground, where liquefaction is less of an issue. So it'll be more cost-effective to build a post-disaster building that can actually operate after an earthquake. And also not only move our career firefighters there and the admin center, but also our EOC, which is also down in the floodplain by the RCOP building. So that's currently the plan, is to replace the current Alexboro Fire Hall with a completely new facility on that site. And then put a volunteer-only Fire Hall on Tanalis Road, which is a much smaller facility fit on that existing site. Much better. Both buildings obviously being built to modern sized, mixed networks.
Mr. Wickham, if I can just ask, did we learn anything through the process of the Tanalis Hall going forward, we'll approach things differently, or it's informed how we approach the master plan in terms of the investment we made in that Fire Hall? And now we're talking about moving a lot of those operations to Valley Cliff and so on?
That's a great question. I think we did. I think that we needed to look at, as we're doing now with the master plan, we needed to look at the full system, look at all the Fire Halls, look at all the needs. The seismic upgrade program, when it was initiated, was very much, oh my God, we have an immediate problem. We had a report became to us, we had to get in there immediately. As it turned out, speaking of progressive elaboration, we did lose, or we did spend money we didn't need to on that hall, but not very much. All of the bracing that you see there, all of the work that was done was absolutely required at the time and is still required because we're not going to have people move out of there until at best a year or two down the road. So that, all of that physical bracing needed to be done. We did get down the design road a little bit further than maybe we should have. We spent some design dollars that maybe we couldn't, we didn't need to. Because we were running that in parallel with the architecture review. But we didn't spend very much taxpayer dollars before realizing we needed a new plan.
So I'm just going to scroll through these. I mentioned the Fire Hall of Public Works, we're in the same position. Municipal Hall, end-of-life as well, capacity issues, maximum five years left in this building, without having to put significant money in, and we need significantly more space. So that's, the architect definitely recommended a replacement there. The library is a bit of a question mark yet, we're doing a future needs analysis there. Figure out exactly what we need, but we put a placeholder in here for an expanded library at some point in the life of this plan. And there's some challenges there on programming and areas for children and things like that that need to be looked at. The Brennan Park, these were all looked at through the community engagement. Ice rink, we're having issues with prime time capacity, same thing with the pool. The wellness center, there's something that we see as an opportunity to reduce barriers for at-risk residents, creating sort of one-stop shopping for parents who want to exercise at Brennan Park while their children are exercising there. And some opportunities for some improved customer service there as well. We also have some new facilities identified. Transit maintenance hub, maintenance facility is required to expand our system. As you probably saw earlier, it's hitting a wall soon. And also for the possibility of regional transit. A multimodal hub is required. The current bus shelter at Pemberton will be relocated in the future for active transportation. And we also look at something a little bit more ambitious as outlined in the multimodal transportation plan. Lots of plans. We've also admittedly identified in the very beginning, year and a half ago, these neighborhood centers. I mean, we weren't quite sure what we were going to do with them, to be honest. And through this process, they've become very instrumental as possible interim spaces that we can create to alleviate capacity challenges at Brennan Park, library, maybe even support the arts community and things like that. So, and they're on there as well. So here's the final tally. So we've listed all the replacements with expansions on column A, column B are the new facilities, C are the renos. And we've totaled them all up and you'll see on there, there are ranges, and those ranges are to reflect the contingencies. And as you can see, the contingencies are quite substantial actually in some of these facilities. They may or may not be ever realized or required. Although it's important to note that we put all these in 2020 dollars. The initial cost estimates came back from the architects with different years attached to them and based on the architect's assumptions on when they may be built. But we don't know exactly yet when they're all going to be built. So we just brought them all back to 2020. So what you're seeing there is a significant increase from the numbers that we had in the strategy document running around a hundred million. And now we're in the plus or minus one fifty million dollar range for all these facilities.
Mr. Wickham, can you clarify what a contingency is or like some examples of what that might be?
Sure, contingencies can be when they actually get into doing the design and are starting to site prep, the costs are more, or if construction costs go up faster than they anticipate, those types of things. There's lots of variables that can affect this development. So that gives us, and some of the developments is up to 25% of the value of the project is in the form of contingency. So I'm just going to turn to Camilla for a sec here. We also look beyond just the initial investment, so let Camilla speak to that.
Thanks Neil. So as part of the, as part of the process, we wanted to make sure that we looked at, looked at beyond just the initial investment, the capital investment of building any new facilities. And that we looked at the implications of what the future operating maintenance and capital repair costs might be. And so obviously, we don't have the designs for any new facilities right now. So it's, the costs that we have included in this report are our best guess estimates at this point. But we thought it was important to include it so that it's no surprise that we're going to be seeing some increases over the upcoming years. So these figures here are for when all of the facility investments are completed. All of the buildings have been added or removed, the portfolio has changed. And at the end of what we have suggested in this report, we anticipate that the operating and maintenance costs might go up by a hundred and, sorry, 1.45 million dollars a year. And capital repairs would go up an estimated 1.28 million dollars a year. What we also wanted to point out was that some facilities will have more impact than others. For example, adding a second ice rink, due to the high energy consumption in an ice rink, the energy cost will be higher than in an average facility. And similarly, the equipment there is quite specialized and expensive and so would have higher operating maintenance and capital repair costs than an average facility. So some are simple buildings, some are not. So, but at the end of the, at the end of the day, that's our best guess estimate for the increases. So as we get closer to each of the different projects, we will be coming back to council with business cases. And within those business cases, we'll have a much better idea of what the actual costs will look like. So we can make some decisions at that time. So these are just very, very rough estimates.
Before you go on, do these, do capital repairs include replacement reserves? Or is that another thing that we would sort of project out in the future?
Replacement of the equipment, yes, but not of the building.
And Rob just reminded me that the, these numbers, they're provided by different architects. Most of them, I believe, actually include furniture, furnishings and equipment as well. I don't think they all do, but most of them, I think, do actually include like furnishings as well. So that's the level of detail that we tried to get to, which is part of the wide, part of the cost difference. So is there any specific facilities that you'd like to dive into any deeper at this point? Or do you want to just move on to how, to the when part?
Can we go back to a second? Reminder, there was a consideration of the folding in the parks operation with the public works? Or how are those separate?
So, you want to go? The public, the Parks Operations Office currently are located at Brennan Park. Yeah, and we did consider initially the possibility of putting it in the public works yard. I don't think there was enough room as part of it. I think there was an operational advantage to continue to keep it at Brennan Park as well. No, the public works will go first, as you'll see as we get into it, it's an end-of-life situation. Also, the Parks Operations Facility, we need to go through the Brennan Park Land Master Planning Process to figure out where things are going to go before we can make a decision. So that's sort of the contingency on that one is getting that looked at first.
Yes, a couple of quick questions. First of all, the neighborhood centers, would you say that the concept or the assumptions regarding their uses are flexible enough such that they could accommodate, for example, theater company rental or set construction and rehearsal space could conceivably be part of the basket of uses for one or another neighborhood center?
We have no limits at all on those right now, we are wide open. We're just excited that all of a sudden they're becoming a hot commodity. Considering we first started like, well, what are we going to do with these and exactly how are they going to work? But they are, yeah, we are wide open on those.
Very good.
I'm going to talk more about that in a minute.
Very good. I had the opportunity to visit the, in Maple Ridge, I believe it's Haney Place. It's a municipal governmental arts facility arena complex. And it looks to have been planned over quite a period, about 15 years or so. But I noticed that the federal government and the provincial government are quite prominent in this complex as having office spaces adjoining Municipal Hall for Maple Ridge or the local municipality. My question is, for the Municipal Hall or Civic Services Building, has the concept of collaboration with both federal and provincial agencies, both of which have offices in the downtown, the province is of course a tenant with the district elsewhere, are there scenarios that could be contemplated in the planning of Civic Services Building, collaboration with the federal provincial agencies?
Absolutely, 100%, yeah. We, every dollar counts in this framework here. So every opportunity to shave some money off the cost of the investment is what we will be looking at.
And we have reached out, we've had preliminary discussions probably a year and a half ago.
Started to, yeah.
And to just to float the different agencies that are downtown, that may be leasing, that may be, you know, coming up at the end of the leases, just to get it out there. Because those agents, the people that are, the tenants in the buildings are not the people who make those decisions, but they need to run it up the pole to the people who do make the decisions and then get us information on, to get a better discussion.
Thank you.
And in the actual report, under the end-of-life relocation table, there's the drop-in center. Can you just speak to that one a little bit more on where that currently is and how that will get?
Do you want the youth drop-in center?
Well, then there's two, it's the youth center and how the drop-in center. And I'm just, maybe I'm confused on the drop-in centers. And so is it getting picked up through, under one roof or the?
So I'm just, I'm glad to see that we're contemplating capital repairs and operational expenses going forward and presumably the reserve, the replacement reserves. Do we have any mechanism to capture the broader impact on affordability? For example, if I'm coming to a community and buying a home, I might not anticipate looking at the quality or of the Municipal Hall and determining how much I'm going to pay for a home. But if I see there's an eight-length pool, I might be willing to pay a fair bit more for my home. And presumably homes are then more expensive. So is that something that we're able to consider at all in our planning at this point?
That's a really interesting question. You said that the last question he asked as well. Yeah, I'm actually, to be honest, I'm really not sure how to answer that. I mean, I think what we, one layer we will get into in a minute when we start talking about how to prioritize is what are the community benefit of the investment? And there's multiple ripple effects all the way through, right? So that's something that I think we will or can look at as we're evaluating each investment going forward. And maybe I'll just come back to that in a second, we'll just pop that slide up. Now we're getting into sort of prioritization as opposed to specific investments. Anything else? Okay, so now we've covered off the what, we'll move on to the when. So you take, we took that list, how do we put this in some kind of order? How do we put some timing to it, some priority to it? So these are things that we looked at, and again, all outlined in the report. So the strategic principle in the strategy identified a primary and a secondary way to prioritize. The primary way was to put things into critical core and support buckets. I'm not going to go into each one right now, it's in the report. But that played a large role in how we move forward here. There's also secondary prioritization as well. When you kind of get into like picking ties between categories, the principal and the critical, you've got the secondary lens to look at to say, well, what's maybe more important amongst all the critical? And I've highlighted in red, the end-of-life. And because what we learned in, through the replacement exercise the architects went through, the end-of-life is really critical here, it's really, really important. And you'll see here that in this secondary prioritization, that end-of-life is sort of number two in the list over, or ahead of things like opportunistic grant funding and even growth for that matter. We have facilities, they're end-of-life, we have to fix them, we can't just walk away from them. So that's why that's kind of highlighted there, and it's very prominent in what you're going to see coming up. As again, your question, Councilor Pago, community benefit, that's something I think we have to take a good look at going forward. Like these critical core buckets are great, and in having a way to prioritize with those buckets is good. But we also think we need to look at what's the actual kind of incremental benefit of making this investment? How many people is it going to impact and how widespread does it affect the community? And that's something like, for example, even looking at the Fire Hall. Like community safety is incredibly important. You know, getting the Fire Hall and the AOC, Emergency Operations Center, out of the floodplain, really, really important to do. So that's something that we take a look at. We're also taking a look at external funding opportunities. They're going to have an impact on when, if there's federal. They're going to have an impact on when, if there's federal money and provincial money available, and there's partners available to deliver facilities, that's going to move things up quicker and allow things to happen faster. And even things like leasing. Leasing leaves, if we are to lease certain facilities, there's an operational hit that has to be considered, but it doesn't chew up capital. So capital's available for other facilities as well. So it's something to look at. So in the report, there is two tables at the, sorry, there's a table in there. It's 38, I mean, not 38, I can't actually, I don't remember which one it is. This is a way of just sort of summarizing that one table. So what, sorry, table 34, my apologies. So this is the summary of that. So basically, the first two columns you're seeing here that show up within three and within five years, those are largely facilities that are, they're existing facilities, they're end-of-life, they've got capacity issues. In some cases, there's community safety issues. So based on all of the previous criteria and the architect's reviews, we're recommending that column one facilities be completed in three years, and column two facilities recommended be done in the first five years. Now, column three includes facilities that are new, or expansions to new facilities, and are driven by growth, all right? And the timing of these are not really tied to end-of-life conditions. So these are facilities we want, but we can defer them a little bit if we have to to complete the other facilities that are end-of-life. And as we're going to see a bit later, the completion of those facilities and the timing of those is going to be largely dictated by the amount of funding we can get externally and the partnerships that we can create. So while we're waiting for those facilities to be completed, we also need some interim solutions. There's a few facilities that are in a challenging situation, so I'm going to let Natasha speak a little bit to this one.
Yeah, and so just on the last slide, the library and Brennan Park are in that third category. And although we know we have some significant capacity challenges in these areas, looking at that through the filter of the strategic principle of deferring capital investment, we've been really quite actively developing this idea of interim solutions. What can we do within our existing community infrastructure, both in terms of our partnerships and our district dome facilities, that maybe have a capacity demand misalignment taking place? So some areas that are, you know, underutilized but programmed, or other areas that are well utilized but perhaps underprogrammed. And so can we work with our partners to sort of match up capacity and demand? We'll be coming back to council with this in about a month to go through this in more detail about what this might look like. But including, you know, the arts community has several needs, you know, makerspace, showcase space, those kinds of things that have come up. We feel like there's lots of opportunity, and have been talking with the Arts Council about this, that we could actually probably at least have an interim strategy that is quite robust and really place-based. So, you know, people don't grow up in programs, they grow up in communities and neighborhoods. And we want to be able to activate that neighborhood space where people already are with the programs that enrich their lives. So lots of potential there. Interim solutions, that will help us defer the big investments without too much sacrifice. I'm going to talk about me and Tom.
Okay. Well, in case Ms. Bahal, we, if we're here for five more years, we may need some more space. We're going to pre-tag right now. So that's something we're going to look at, is do we at least grab some other space? If we can't, we maybe will put some of it in some of these other facilities as well. But if we're unable to, then we will be looking at leasing some temporary space there. In terms of land, so there's a strategic principle foray in the strategy. It's all about minimizing our land investment in private property. So with that lens, we looked only, we tried to find ways to land all of our land needs on either crown land or district dome ground land that we own right now. And so what you're seeing here is a list of the potential private acquisitions we have to make going forward. On the critical side, the good news is, is in the decking and utility side of things, we have a lot of land we have to acquire over time, but we also, we have funding for that through utilities and through an existing decking budget. So we don't need to look at additional funding from the master plan to fund our critical categories at this point in time. Those numbers look huge. I mean, we're looking at right-of-ways as opposed to acquiring single properties and full properties. It's just taking linear strips through properties. And a lot of the utilities are there on private land that have been put there for years and years and years through a handshake agreement or some type of informal agreement with the landlord. They're not really estimated high risk to us. I mean, they've been there for a while, the owners know they're there. But we should clean it up and get corporate right-of-way agreements on those properties. So there's some work to be done there. In the core category, there's going to be a little bit more work done. We haven't fully completed this one yet. As you can imagine, with all of those categories, there's a lot of work to be done to identify every potential acquisition that we would need to make. We've done a first step at it, and I think we've done a pretty good job. I think we're pretty close, but there still needs to be some more work done there to figure out exactly what we need to do in these categories. The only sort of, on the funding side, we're not quite as well-positioned in this category as we were with the critical ones. So there's going to be some funding impacts going forward on the master plan. The tricky part is that we don't know what those numbers are going to be yet. And we may not for a while, but it's a really big job to figure out exactly every piece of private property we're going to need for all of these categories, and then actually assessing how much each one may cost. So that's going to be something that's going to play out over time. And we're going to be continually updating the model with new information as we go and spotting it in the right possible spot. And then we've identified in the support category, a bunch of land categories that were identified in the strategy. And at this point, we're not recommending that we acquire private land for any of these. Our goal is to land these on crown land, or to put them on district property, or potentially put them on private land through rezoning as opposed to going out and buying the land. So there's no funding required on those ones. Where we are right now, I just said there's more analysis, but we have identified in the bullet two, that there are some immediate priority acquisitions that need to take place in the next few years. And so we put a placeholder in the R in the modeling, you'll see later, for about $5 million for those. And just to acknowledge that these acquisitions are going to occur, like all of the acquisitions, they're going to take place over a fairly long period of time. So take a break for a second there, and see if you have any questions about that information.
Counsel Anderson?
Yes. With respect to the multimodal hub, I'm wondering, the last time we discussed the downtown entrance study, the answer we received was that there is, or report we received is that there's ongoing data gathering. I wondered how the multimodal hub will fit into our downtown entrance study. Is it fully encompassed within the terms and reference to that study?
Chair, yes, it is. And we do have places that we're looking, we'll probably put, and so that is part of the scope.
Thank you.
Counsel Star?
Clarification on the previous slide. Sorry, one back. The decking infrastructure funding, am I not, that comes out of the capital budget, isn't it?
Yes.
Yeah. So it is still impacting that overall funding model in terms of, we just earmarked $2 million of that towards decking.
Correct.
It's still coming out of that same capital pool.
Yeah, we were just trying to identify any incremental in this one. So now we're moving into the how. So before we get into that, just want to provide a little bit of context on the key funding sources, so that when you're seeing the things going forward here, you've got this context in your mind here. So what we identified first here, these are two sources of funding that do not require any taxation. So the district has reserves, it has land and facilities that they can dispose of, and it has a small parks reserve budget as well. So the 11 million is highlighted in red, because that's really the only thing that we know for sure right now in terms of our funding. So if you think about the volume of investments that we're contemplating here, the only for sure number we have that we can go after is this $11 million. We've identified the potential for up to 45 million, or plus or minus 45 million in disposition proceeds through signed district real estate. But there's no decisions being made on that today, and there's going to be a whole separate process that we're going to go through in the next year to decide which assets we are going to dispose of to support this project. So the $45 million is just a number we've attached based on looking at our portfolio en masse that we have and seeing what might be possibilities. But again, through another separate process. I think the other thing that's important to recognize here, that these numbers that are showing up there, once they're done, they're done. So they're not, right now, there's no reserve being, provision being set up to repopulate the reserve fund. If we dispose of all of these assets, or some of these assets, once they're disposed, they don't reproduce themselves, they're gone, they're in someone else's hands. We may not be disposing of all of our assets, but the ones that we do dispose of are gone. So it's really important to keep that in mind, that this is not a fund that's replenishing itself right now. Sorry. External funding, grants, partnerships, sponsorships are all important, and we're going to see more why as we go into the next set of slides. But it's also important to recognize that those typically only apply to recreational and cultural facilities. Grants are not typically out there to fund the school halls and public works facilities. They're there for recreation and cultural things. So that's just an important lens to bring to it. I also just wanted to walk through real quickly, where does development fit into this big picture of funding? So there's two ways. One way is through community amenity contributions that we get when we do, we process rezonies. So as you can see up there, they're voluntary, they're discretionary, they're established through policy, and the current policy directs any CACs that we collect or some, directs CACs towards affordable housing and critical facilities. So you see the fire hall, public works, community hall. The policy is relatively newish as well, so it's sitting there with a modest $600,000 in the reserve right now for critical facilities. So there's not 10, 20 million sitting there yet. It's building and it's growing, but it's just getting started. And I think the other thing to recognize is that this is all dependent on the development cycle. So it only gets built up as development goes. So it's not really a guaranteed source, and nor do we really see it as a primary source for that reason.
Counsel Star?
Just a clarification, that $600,000 in the reserve for critical facilities, is that critical facilities and affordable housing, or are they separate?
They're separate, yeah. There's like 1.3 million or something in there for affordable housing. Development cost charges are another form of development funding. We collect those through subdivision and building permits. DCCs are regulated by the province. They're set out in a bylaw that the province approves. And they only apply to what I'm calling growth-driven projects, roads, drainage, sewers, water, parkland. Projects that are there because the community's grown, and you can't use DCCs to pay for things that you didn't maintain or didn't pick up in the past. And more importantly, it's not there to fund any facilities. And much like the CACs, it's dependent on the development cycle, so it's not guaranteed. So that's something that may provide some funding in the future, but it's not seen as an immediate significant source right now to help with the current situation.
Is there any?
So why decking isn't mentioned with the DCCs?
The province doesn't see decking as drainage, so community protection is not considered to be DCC eligible.
So in terms of sources that are out there that do impact taxation, there's two main ones. One is borrowing. So you'll see in the reports, and you'll see later on, that, you know, the district has a borrowing legal limit and a practical limit, and right now, that's set at $8 million a year. Roughly half of that is being used. So for the illustrations that we've got in here that we'll talk about in the future here, we're contemplating utilizing that $4 million of borrowing, the remaining $4 million for facilities and land investments. So each year that you would borrow $4 million, it's adding, it requires debt service. And $4 million requires a $330,000 a year debt service. So each year, you add $4 million borrowing into the program, is going to have 1.1% tax increase for that year that borrowing starts. And it gets embedded in the budget after that, in that first year. So if you borrow for five years consistently to fund investments, you're adding a 1% tax increase, just over 1% each year. Leasing as well, leasing, as I said earlier, is interesting because it defers capital, it saves capital, significant amounts, but it also impacts the operating budget. So a lease payment on a $0.5 million to $700,000 a year lease payment for a 20,000, 30,000 square foot facility would increase taxes in that year between 1.5 and just over 2% for that borrowing, for that leasing. So those are the ones that have an impact on taxation.
There are additional constraints on borrowing. If we could just as a model policy say, hey, let's plan up on our $4 million new dollars every year, just for a foreseeable future.
Yeah, and there's, I mean, there can be other things that happen to the community. I mean, this is assuming, like, right now, we're just, we're just building a model based on the information we have today and the best information that we've got. But things can change, and things can happen that impacted the ability, on our ability to do that for, for sure.
But we have a ceiling of $26 million, something like that?
It's a percentage of the total value of our community. And I think our policy is 25%?
Thank you.
Maximal borrowing.
And that can increase over time as well, as the tax base goes up, the ability to borrow could go up, but we're not banking on that right at this moment. All right. So in the document, in the report, there's two tables, and they're what we call the funding illustrations. And they were, they're the output of a lot of challenging discussions amongst staff internally early on in this process. We sat down in the beginning thinking that we were going to be able to create this itemized list starting in year one, this building goes next, this goes next, and goes next, and all the way through, and just lay this whole thing out. And after a couple workshops, we kind of hit the wall because we realized that there's just so many variables here that are going to impact on how this thing plays out. So instead of trying to create a prescriptive list, we realized there is no singular approach. There's no one way to do this. There's many ways to do it. And it's, but it's going to depend on what experiences we encounter as we go forward. So in order to try and bring some kind of insights to the table though, we created these funding illustrations. And the idea was, was that we wanted to come up with a tool that's going to help future decision-making, and also illustrates the impacts of these external variables and factors. So we created two scenarios. One we're calling maximize external funding, column two. And another one we'll call limited external funding, which is column four. So under column one, you'll see Municipal Hall is leased, the library is leased, so there's no capital requirements for those facilities. They impact operating, but they don't take any of the capital out of the budget, borrowed core capital. The transit maintenance out of that one, we get some funding from the federal government to support it. So we're putting zero in there because we don't need that extra funding. And then the ice rink, we've got in as, with a private partner, all right? So you'll see in those four scenarios, there's really no capital hit for those. Total is zero. Flip over to the next column, you see if we don't lease Municipal Hall, and we don't lease the library, and we don't get the federal funding for the transit facility, and we can't find a partner for the ice rink, the difference is $77 million in capital, which you can put it into borrowing terms is 19 years, 18 years of borrowing. So that really demonstrates the critical need for partnering and to explore leasing things. Not saying that, again, there's no decisions made here. This is just an illustration to help make decisions and to understand the context. But that is probably the simplest way that I can encapsulate those giant tables in the back with tons of numbers in them that I don't really want to walk you through today because it's hard, you'll lose everybody in it. But that really is the key piece. So those are just the variables. But then how does it impact? So in illustration one- So in illustration one, what we're seeing here is the end-of-life facilities, I'm calling the end-of-life facilities, public works, the halls, municipal hall, a bunch of those facilities, they can, looks like they can get done in five years under that scenario with the combination of borrowing and dispositions and funding and things like that. The library could potentially, could be done within seven years, and that's even with a question mark of where we're at with the library. I've put all the other ones, the Brennan Park ones, down below because in that first illustration, they are getting funding from the other governments, they are getting partnerships, those types of things. So those facilities can basically, they're not competing with the ones above for capital to the same degree, so it looks as though they can all get done within that time period as well. So there's no real time numbers on those ones because, for example, if we get, if we did get an operator for the ice rink, well, that rink can be built in two years and be operating, right? There's no limit on that, it's not competing for capital. So under the illustration one, you know, you can sort of see how things can get done. Illustration two is a little bit workier. So under illustration two, the facilities and the end-of-lifers are still kind of getting done in those five years, which is really important. The transit maintenance facility moves back in the timeframe out of that second bucket. And then what we've done in that eight and a half year kind of range is we've put the smaller Brennan Park projects in the mix because they can get done under that scenario because they're not huge ticket items, but the big ticket items like the ice rink and the pool addition and the library, there's really, actually, if you look at the numbers closely, there's no timeline for when they can get done because there's no money left, there's no reserve money left, and a lot of the grant funding money's been used up, and you can't borrow enough money to pay for those facilities in a reasonable timeframe. And so that's why it's really important for us as we go forward to explore the possibility of partners and funding on these facilities before we make any decisions on them. So I'm just going to take it through a couple more here, and then I think maybe they might answer questions, if they don't, happy to come back. So what we took away from those tables, more than the numbers themselves and more than the assumptions, because we could reproduce those tables over and over and over again with different assumptions, and it'd all be interesting to look at. But what we learned most importantly is, is that there's some things that came out of that, some observations that we'll call guiding principles going forward, or funding principles, and, how to put this, we, it looks like we have to find a blend, it's like there's a blending that has to happen here, and it's not obvious in the tables, but when you look at it from above, like, I've identified these first three categories of borrowing, dispositions, and funding, they're all required, we need them all, and we kind of need them all in the beginning, and we need them all through the whole process. We can't borrow our way out of this, there's not enough borrowing capacity, we can't sell our assets out of this because we don't have enough assets to sell, and we can't grant fund this because we're not going to grant funding. So we need all of them, and when you look at the illustrations, we also realize we need all of them pretty much instantly, and we blend them as we go, because you can't build a twenty million dollar facility with a four million dollar borrow, you need some reserves, and you might need some funding as well. So there's a bit of a recipe there, and these illustrations that we've attached give us the tool to figure that out. The other thing that we understood in this process is number six, which is, we can't get in this position again. We need to be in a position in twenty-five or thirty years when this comes back up again, that we have reserves, you can't borrow and grant fund your way out of these problems, and so these investments, so we have to start, once we get this pile dealt with, we've got to start putting money away, maybe even sooner if we can, but that may be a bit ambitious. So we've got to start looking at putting money away once, so that we've got money in the bank for these facilities down the road, which will also cost a lot more money than the ones we're living at today. So moving to the finish line here. In terms of implementation, once this is adopted, we're going to update the long-term financial plan with this information. We're also going to launch into a lot of analysis and decision-making, design work, construction work, and that's going to start, some of that's starting in year one, some of that's already starting with the fire hall. But what we do see, there's a table thirty-eight in the report, I'm not going to put it up on the screen, you won't be able to see it, but it lays out all of the activities that we have identified already, there's a significant amount in that list, and so they're going to get started right away. But what we see is, like, in year one, there's still a lot of due diligence work to be done on various facilities. Again, no decisions have been made, other than to move forward with the fire hall. We need to move into the decision-making mode, so all these decisions will come back to council for authorization as they go, so we see a lot more of that happening in year two. And then once we get to the year three and beyond, that's when we see a lot of the project work starting as well. So we've covered a lot today, and there's a lot in that document, I can appreciate. So there's just a couple of key bullets I wanted to go over before we close up here today, there's sort of some key takeaways. One is going back to the beginning, that this master plan is really a tool, it's not a definitive statement. If someone gave up with a better word, then it's a tool, it's fine, we can label it that, I just have struggled to figure out another word for it, but it is something that we can use to help support the many decisions that we have to make going forward. I've said over and over again that no decisions have yet been made, they will be, investment decisions are made through the budgeting process, and they'll come to you for authorization through that process. It's based on the best information that we have today, and it's going to change constantly, and the need to explore selling land, grant funding, partnerships, leasing, all that stuff is absolutely critical, because they have the greatest potential to minimize the impacts on our taxpayer and to get these facilities built in a timely, timely fashion. So with that, we have a recommended resolution that council endorse the master plan and direct us to move forward with the, sorry, it's actually, the committee directed council, thank you.
Recommend.
Recommend to council to endorse the master plan.
Thank you very much. Before we go to the resolution, maybe I will ask council for some questions to start off with, and then a little bit of thoughts, and then ask for the resolution after. Councilor French, do you want to start?
Yes, please. Thank you. In regards to Brennan Park and municipal hall, and private sector partner interest, is it out there? Like, have private sector interests come to us and said, hey, we want to talk to you about your municipal hall replacement and upgrades or expansion reference?
Through, not yet. We wanted to get this through council before we would really even entertain that, we didn't really want there being this sense out on the street, for lack of a better word, that, you know, staff are talking to private developers, and staff are talking to private operators about facilities, and we haven't even had a chance to present this plan to council. So we wanted to get this in first, we will move into that mode now. I mean, what we worked from was evidence-based, you know, in other communities, you do see private partnerships for facilities, rinks, pools, and things like that. You know, municipal hall is basically generic office space at the end of the day, there's lots of office space that will be being built in Squamish in the next five to ten years. So, and the provincial government itself has gone, has gone away from owning its own office space and is leasing their space now typically. So there's models out there that we can look at to see if it can work. Whether that's the right decision for us right now is to be determined, but we saw enough out there in the universe to know that we think it's possible, but we wanted to get council to endorse this plan before we talked anybody in very detail.
So in that exploration of checking out what other communities have done on this front, is there a shining example of best practice in B.C. where there has been a really successful partnership to build a new municipal?
We haven't been to, we didn't do a lot of work around, well, I shouldn't say that, we did this work a couple of years ago, now that I remember, it's been a couple of years. When we first started to do an analysis on the civic block, we spoke to a bunch of communities that actually were municipal halls, and what we learned in that process was that the private-public partnerships were a bit challenging at times, as opposed to just sort of leasing space necessarily, and they said that sometimes it's tough to get things to line up, but there are some examples out there. But what we found is, I think, at the end of the day, and we've often struggled with this concept, is looking at other communities, is we see things happening, but at the end of the day, it still comes back to sometimes the unique circumstances of what we have one on our community. Things like, even like, for example, with us, like, we own land that sponsored, that we got through a sponsored grant from the Crown, so we own it, and we can put a municipal hall on it, but we can't commercialize it, which is, we can't bring a private developer in to build on that property and lease it to us. So if we're going to put it on that land, then we're going to build it ourselves. But there's also other facilities that are being built in downtown Squamish that are going to be coming out of the ground in the next few years that could house a media hall, that'd be big enough to put a media hall in, and we might be able to work with a developer to even have some design considerations of things around that before they get started. So that's why it does come out at the end of the day back to sometimes just the uniqueness of the land that we're working with.
Thank you.
Councilor Anderson?
I'm just going to quote from your report to council on organizational impact. Additional capacity has been identified in the draft master plan to support its implementation, including the recommendation to hire a project manager to coordinate the many facility investments identified. Is that a recommendation, will that be coming to us in the next budget, budget 2020? And is it determined that it's going to be one project manager to work across multiple facility projects, or is there a scenario of hiring different specialists to work on Brennan Park, or this one, or that one?
At this time, we believe it will be one project manager. We're just starting the staff budget process as we work through to what we'll decide to present to council. I don't believe that we would specialize the project managers who would be working for us, it's more like we would specialize the architects and construction managers, not sure that they would, that you're right. Thank you.
Can we go back to the funding, the first funding illustration? Yeah, sorry, the one that you were just on. Yep. So in scenario one, where we maximize external funding, most of those granting opportunities still require some matching funds from the district, so they will have some capital impact.
So in these ones here, for example, the media hall and library is leased, so there's no capital, or it's just a pure lease agreement. The transit maintenance facility, yes, there could be capital, but what I'm trying to show here is the incremental difference between getting, like, federal funding versus not getting federal funding. So that's just, I could have put twenty million in that capital category, and I would have put twenty-nine million in on the one on the other side, so I was just trying to show the net difference.
Net difference, okay, that makes more sense.
Okay, and then in terms of the ice rink, that would begin, would be like a long-term lease or something, where there wouldn't be any capital or so.
Just wanted to clarify that.
Fair enough, yeah.
Often when the grants come through, they still require the municipality, some portion of the money forward.
Yeah, so what's not showing in this, this high-level interpretation is all the funding that would be required for the other Brennan Parks, so I do show here grant funding at the bottom, but we would, yeah, we would need capital for the other Brennan Park projects that would be getting that funding, but that's not part of this, sort of this part of the analysis.
Thank you.
Councilor Harkins?
Thank you. This is a huge document, quite a task that we've all sort of been saddled with, with quite a long, long, long list of facilities that need to be dealt with, so I'm really, I'm impressed with the depth and the amount of sort of creative thinking that's got us already this far as we're starting to move forward. But I'm really interested in, as we make these decisions, thinking about, you know, the lifespan of the building, and, of these new buildings, and how we maximize that, and how we plan for those replacements, so we don't saddle, you know, a future generation at this point with the same problem. So I'm curious to get your thoughts on, I mean, this has got a little bit over the horizon of this, but I suppose it's another way to, the other way this question could go is, what could have been done to prevent us getting here, which is basically our masking of the next, the next wave, like, how?
Yeah, so through, I mean, this slide here that Camilla spoke to, and what's embedded in these increased operating and maintenance cost numbers and capital is a more proactive approach to maintaining our facilities. So that was one of the strategic recommendations that came out of the first strategy, was we need to do a better job of extending our buildings, and so what we've identified in these numbers, and admittedly, they're very preliminary, they're staff-driven, it wasn't the best, the greatest information we're working with, but enough to kind of give us a snapshot, but we've, the spreadsheets that go behind these numbers, we tried to look at all the facilities that we run right now and take them to a higher level, so that we can extend them. And they're not facilities that necessarily would require expansion, so we want to, it's not going to be expanded, we want to keep working those facilities for as long as we can.
Yes, on the capital side in particular, you know, we, there is often not enough money to replace HVAC units, and so they're pushed to the maximum, and then we're in an emergency situation for replacing them, and that usually costs more and causes a lot more inconvenience than if you have, if you can plan on the replacement. Plus, using an aging piece of equipment often means higher energy costs because they're not running as well. So there's lots of implications for really being better at budgeting for appropriate operating and maintenance costs and appropriate capital costs in order to keep the buildings and all the equipment running as they should be.
And in terms of the long-term reserve, as we talked a little bit about the need to do that, I may not be able to find the number real quickly in here, but, you know, I talked in here about, you know, putting long-term reserves away, as I said, for example, a twenty million dollar facility replacement in 2020 becomes a sixty-seven million dollar replacement in 2045, based on a five percent increase on average. That five percent might be a bit ambitious, but if you cut it in half, it's going to go from twenty million to forty-five, fifty million, so, yeah.
Thank you, thank you. The, I was curious about factoring in with these replacement facilities, the, through the new building standards slash energy, operating cost, greenhouse gas, sort of blends on that, and how, I understand that some of the facilities doesn't really fall into that big bay, maybe big bay doors, or, but it could be more important than others, and all that was factored into your costing as we sort of start moving forward.
The costings for the new buildings was based on step code two, which is our current code, and that's in relation to the energy efficiency that the buildings would be built in. As I understand it from the building department, that institutional buildings are not carbonized. For example, a fire hall, it's really difficult to make them that energy efficient when you go to big bay, that the doors are often open and closed, and they need to keep all the engines warm so that they run properly when they start them up, and so on, so for some of the, and ice rinks and pools and so on. So, but when we bring back the business case for each of the facilities, we will have identified which step code is appropriate for that building and associated costs with not only the building of it, but then also the operating costs, given, given the sort of high energy, high efficiency energy equipment that we're putting in. So we will always be looking for the best that we can, absolutely, and where there's opportunity for things like solar paneling or GS that are running, obviously, that, the time to do that is when you're putting a new building in, so we'll look at all those opportunities to make sure they're leading by example.
Thank you. So, question, along the similar lines, is there a time or place where we might look at beyond just, you know, do we do step four, do we put solar panels on the roof, to, do we actually need our own district energy generation, because, you know, there's a site C and all these things, we're expecting hydro costs to skyrocket, so we want to be able to generate our own power to manage costs. Is there a time or place where we start considering that? And somewhat related, Councilor Anderson likes to speak of the opportunity, I think, of wood construction, showcasing what we can do here, stimulating some of that economy potentially, so do we ever layer in an economic development lens in some of how we build these, or is there a process for doing that?
I can speak briefly to the energy question. We have looked in the last few years at generating our own electricity and found that it wasn't economically feasible. I think it's not a core, a core task of a municipal government, not certainly what we're, what we're good at either. Things can certainly change. Things can certainly change and certainly, as an example, we're looking at micro hydro, if you will. If, as solar panels come down in cost and if electricity does go up in cost, a site C as an example, then on a building-by-building basis, it would make a lot of sense to look at. That would change not only the lifecycle costs and decisions around step, but also whether panels are integrated into the building alongside or all sorts of things. So I think that would be on a facility-by-facility basis. And likewise with local, local business. We, for example, there is a company that is interested in bidding on the, some of the fire hall work potentially that is local to Squamish and has some very integrated technology. And so through RFP and tendering process, that would be, there is.
Now, was there anything you would like from council beyond the resolution? No, no, I think if I had a chance to say one thing before we wrap this up, I just wanted to say thanks to everybody within the organization that's worked on this project. It's been a really big undertaking. When we first set out, even a couple of years ago, we couldn't find another community that had tackled this the way that we tackled it. I'm not sure whether that makes us smart or not so smart. But we tackled it. There's been a lot of, you know, admittedly, late nights and evenings and weekends with everybody here. And I just touched the entire organization. So in 13 years of being here, I don't, I haven't seen anything that's gone across the organization like this has. So it's been, it's been amazing to see them pull together to get it done. And I think it's a huge testament to the people that are in here now, everyone that's working at this stuff. So I don't get to say that very often, so I'm going to say it. So yeah, that's it. Just looking for the resolution or the movement to, from the committee to the council so we can move this forward and get on with it. Counselor, is there someone prepared to move the resolution? Counselor Anderson?
Sorry, I just wanted to double check. Were you changing the language of the resolution?
Yeah, so it'll just say that the committee recommend to council. So you comfortable with that, Counselor Anderson?
Yes.
Second, Counselor Stone, any discussion? Counselor Stone?
There's no doubt that receiving this report as a newly elected official with a price tag of $150 million on it is daunting, to say the least. But that being said, I do think it is extremely valuable to have a clear picture of what the whole ecosystem looks like, the needs, the wants. So a huge thanks to everybody around the table for doing heavy lifting to get us here. It's better to know the bad news than to just take your head in the sand and not know what you're looking at. So that is a huge help. I do think we have asked other municipalities if they have undertaken anything like this. And I can assure you, I haven't found any yet. And I think that that just means that we're leading by example. I think this helps to serve us all, make better decisions in the future. So daunting, but also good to know.
Counselor Anderson?
I'd just like to note the reflective language under organizational impact recounting how all departments were engaged in this and the benefits of greater understanding and new perspectives cross-department about service delivery and integrated activities. As an observer, I also have to reflect on the fact that this began a few years ago. I believe the first document was the strategic principles and then the StanTech report. So it's been quite a journey, but also for all of us, it seems to me that I have some new perspectives on the relationship between strategic plans and master plans and this document. So it's been a real learning experience and integration, a key word. So it's going to, the journey isn't over yet either. It's just begun, hasn't it?
It's just starting. Counselor Harper?
Thank you. Yeah, I'll echo what my fellow counselors have said so far. It's a tremendous amount of work and I'm sure I only grasp just the tip of the iceberg of what that actually was that got this to us at this point. I'm happy to have this tool as we go forward to continue to tackle these things. And I think with the, with this in place gives us a very good decision, something to help us make these decisions. And I know with the political wheel around the table here, I know we've got a lot of work ahead of us, but I know we can get a lot of this done using this framework or whatever mandate ends up being. So I'm happy to support it and look forward to getting on, getting on with some things.
Sure, as long as everybody else is doing it, I'll acknowledge the hard work of staff as well. It's clear just from the volume of paper. And the amount of change and edit that we've seen just in the time that we've been dealing with this, it's clearly drawn a lot of critical thought from the entire District Squamish team. And it's evident because every department is reflective in the reports and in the strategy. And I, it starts to reflect back on a bunch of years ago when a deep dive was done into our water and sewer and some serious leakage was discovered. And when the calculators came out and staff started to get an understanding of what it was going to cost to deal with the issue and the length of time it was going to take. I see this reflected, but on a way bigger scale because this is so much more expensive than that level was. So I support where we're going and I'm looking forward to spending all that money.
I will be supporting this as well. And I think as Mr. Plum knows, I sometimes get a little bit agitated when we focus just on the capital cost because, you know, I think we're in the situation we're in largely because we haven't paid attention to reserve funding and so on. So I'm, you know, the actual numbers are a fair bit bigger than the numbers we've seen, but I'm really glad that we have this plan. I'm much more comfortable working within a plan and having some context. I understand there's some order of magnitude estimates and some assumptions that we're going to test and refine going forward. I'm happy to do that because we're doing it within a context. We know how everything kind of fits together and we can see the big picture. So despite the rather terrifying numbers, I'm very happy to have this. We really appreciate the work that's gone into this and yeah, it's great work. So thank you, everyone. And, oh, yes, Counselor Stone?
One thing that I forgot to mention is I think that this also just really highlights, and Camilla spoke to this, the importance of partnerships within the community. We're not going to come up with the $150 million on our own. And so I think that this plan helps us direct those conversations with our community partners. And I think that that's a really valuable piece to have as well, whether it's with other agencies, federal, provincial, school district and the development community as well. So that, I think, is a huge help that we can have a clear picture and asking what it, asking for what it is that we need.
Thank you. I will call a question. All was in paper, no more post, motion carries.
Motion for the majority.
Yeah, so I have a motion to terminate. Counselor Stone, Counselor Harper, all was in paper, no more post, carries.